Welcome to the The Board Town Divide Public Utility District Board of Directors this Tuesday, May sixteenth at two oh one P M. At this time, I would like to uh have a roll call vote. And Donna, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Union of States.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Yes, please.
Yes, uh, I'd like to commend Liz. On the way this agenda is put together in the packet, the sub tabs are awesome. Makes it a lot more eas- a lot easier to use and that's a really good job. And carry on.
I wanted to say um thank you for stealing my thunder and my section.
Anytime.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's why I did it now instead of waiting to use the bit.
Thank you, that's okay. I just wanted to comment that unfortunately, I won't have an excuse for not be able to stay on task. With the organization that's in here now. Anyway, that's
That's why she did it.
Okay, so that's with with that in mind, uh, any any uh motion for the adoption?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
All done, second the motion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Now will you start the public forum session? And I got something to read here first. Always um pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three, the Brown Act. Members of the public shall be afforded the opportunity to speak on any agenda item. The board president will call for public comment on each agenda item. Those wishing to address the board on a matter that is not on the agenda and within the jurisdictional authority of the district may do so during the public forum portion of this agenda. Follow the procedures for speaking during public forum or public comment session. A, public members desiring to provide comment must raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the board president. Speak from the podium and begin by stating their name. If participating via teleconference, please utilize the raise your hand feature. The president will call upon you by addressing you by name or phone number indicated on Zoom. Comment must be directly made to the board only. Disruptive connect shall not be permitted in any board meeting. Consistence in disruptive conduct shall be grounds for summary termination of the privilege to address the board of directors. Currently, there is a five minute limit per speaker and twenty minutes cumulative. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under the public forum. The board president is responsible for maintaining an orderly meeting. And with that, the floor is open to the public. Let's have our honored uh first time guest uh begin. Ross, if you could state your last name, please.
Yeah, my name's Ross Lee. I'm the operator of Bootstrap Hill Farm down here in Garden Valley, Alpha Highway ninety-three. Um, my lot's been getting irrigation water since the nineteen seventies. I know it's been paid since the nineteen seventies every year. Um, we we love the service, that's why we bought the property. We love the irrigation water and it just showered you with praise before I say anything else. Um, I've noticed in the last couple of years, the maintenance on the ditch has been awesome. Your employees have been so incredibly great. I had a problem one time with a gofer hole seeping water because the ditch was running too high because demand upstream was off. They people weren't pulling what they're supposed to be pulling, so the ditch was running high on my property, which meant that I was flooding out my field. Made a phone call twenty minutes later. Two really great guys come out, make sure all the culverts are clear, adjust the flow, problem solved. Phenomenal, like that's, I can't expect anything better from a any institution, so that, right on. And I gotta say, I think the board directors too, I'm really happy to see you guys sitting where you're sitting. It's really, really nice. Um, I feel like I can come here and talk to you guys. And so, thanks, thanks for having me, and that's all great. We grow a lot of lettuce.
Big butts.
Yeah, yeah, but and you know, it's okay, I'm just here to communicate, but I don't know what the long term vision is. I need to be more involved. I don't know the long term vision for irrigation water on the divide. I hope it's in perpetuity. I got three kids. I'd love to expand my operation. I always have been looking for real estate with the ditch on it. There aren't many places in California where I can buy irrigation water to run an operation like I want to run. It's it's a diamond in the rough and you gotta you know, we have a very magical thing on the divide. Forecast, I've seen forecasts to show that over um the next twenty-five years with predictions of global climate change and everything else. We might be in a sweet spot where we might be receiving more precipitation than other places in the state. It's gonna be a great place for small local agriculture. Reliability is fundamental. I start crop planting in January. I have fifty thousand dollars in vegetable starts in greenhouse acres that have to get planted out. I have a good well that runs fourteen gallons a minute. But when May comes around and I don't have irrigation water, it gets real scary. I know that the board made this decision for fire prevention, that's awesome. But in a year when we have historic snowpack, historic water reserves. Water's flowing out, man, I would have paid you guys for water in January. Just to make sure it was coming. I'm happy to pay the board or pay the institution anything they want to make sure that water's on my property on May first. Not having it means that I'm running a pump and a well that I also depend on to water my house. If I run that thing dry, I gotta move until I fix the situation. If I don't have reliable irrigation water, I'm faced with a couple of decisions. One is which to move the operation. The other one is to dig an agricultural well and stop finding uh water from the district, which I don't want to do because I want to see it run. So I don't know what to do. I don't buy fire prevention water, I buy irrigation water. I understand that it's a problem and we need to address that. I personally think the vegetation management and maybe something from the state and the feds and people who manage our public lands is probably the actual solution to the problem. I appreciate that there is concern about that and you know, if you guys gotta shut the water off while there's forest fire going on, I get it. Twenty fifteen, you know, they ran the irrigation season a month late, started in June because I could tell just by looking at the sky, there wasn't no water in your reservoir. I get those things, I'm willing to deal with that. When I see water running down every creek and I can't get it in the ditch. I don't know, I would have paid for it, I would have been happy to pay for it. So I just want to put that bug in your ear, the next time you're making these considerations that you know, the lack of notification was really the big problem because I did all my planning without, there was an automated phone call that went out. I get four or five automated phone calls a day. People want to sell me insurance and all kinds of crap. When I hear a robot, I hang up the phone. I've always received written notifications from this institution in the past. That's great, I watch my mailbox like a hawk and if something's from GD Bud, I don't even leave the mailbox before I open it. Make sure, see what's going on. My mortgage, my future on the divide, everything rides on me having a supply of water. If I can't get it one way or the other, I don't have any options, like I'm literally out of business. So I just, I don't know how much irrigation there is out here. I understand if you got four old donkeys and a goat running around on a pasture, which is ninety percent of the property out here that receives irrigation water, unfortunately. You know, maybe they don't care if the water doesn't show up until June, but if you're actually trying to run a small ag operation, it's fundamental that it show up. And I'd like to see a hundred farms like mine out here. I spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars at all of our local businesses. I buy concrete, pipe, everything else. We hire locals to work on the farm. We have kids running around out there. I think we're trying to build something good and I want to see more of it and what we need is reliability. And I just need to, you know, we could fix the, I'm sure that it's a hiccup and it's half on me that I didn't listen to the automated phone call or whatever that came through. But I didn't expect a phone call from GD Bud, I expect a letter because I've gotten a letter every year for the last fourteen years or anything. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. If there's anything I can do, if any of you ever have a question or anything and you want some input on irrigation, I'm full of opinions whether you want or not. So, thank you and thank you for hanging out at the farmers market and chatting with everybody. You too, I've seen lots of faces here. That's great to see you guys out in the community, being approachable. It's a breath of fresh air, so thanks for your attention, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Brief comments, we have Ross now, there is an irrigation committee, so um they'll be addressing those issues, so check the uh website to see when they
Yeah, I saw that meeting. Is that a more appropriate place to go and
Well, they they put in, they'll have the input before it comes to the board on shifting the irrigation and things like that.
Right, your input would have been front and center, we would have liked, you know, before policies made or changes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, to be honest, even even coming at two o'clock on a Tuesday, I mean you know, I got employees right now working, I got irrigation running. You know, I didn't, I didn't put on a clean shirt, you know, sorry, I just, you know, it's like two o'clock on a Tuesday, man, the sun's up, you know, we're out there hammering, so uh, I don't know if there's any way to bring that up, too, you probably have more participation if you picked a day after or a time after normal workout or
The irrigation committee runs uh usually the third day after the board meeting and again at two o'clock, which is bad. But uh that's a bunch of uh residents that have irrigation water except for the other liaison um that doesn't, he's our token uh. So we have a a good group that it gives a lot of input in in all directions um. So, you know, you also might consider getting on the irrigation committee if you have time. Um, but I understand
I love that.
Yeah, because that's um something that that we, you know, every part of the agricultural world that runs and needs is ditch water. Uh, we can, we can use the input.
Beautiful, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Stephen Dowd, thanks. Making that speech, that was great. Uh, I understand that I got a message at the end of April that the irrigation committee was canceled that day uh whenever the meeting we're gonna we uh we were gonna have and uh and I was kind of thinking we were gonna, we were supposed to be making a decision on starting when the irrigation was gonna start flowing and I thought we've been talking for months about starting it, you know, they wanted to put it off from May first to uh maybe May fifteenth. Remember we were talking about that, May fifteenth and then June first and then pretty quick, nothing happened. I mean, it was like it would have been great to be starting on May fifteenth, could have used the water now, right? But it's like, I don't know what happened to the meeting, what happened to the meeting? Because I was looking forward to coming to that one because we're supposed to start the water flow. And uh but what I wanted to talk about was um the uh the increase in the budget, one million dollars. That's pretty steep. I know he was talking about, Nicholas was talking about one point two five or something like that, right?
He's up there.
Yeah.
Is he up there?
I'm here.
Well, I'm talking now.
Oh, there he is up there.
I'm talking now. That's steep, you gotta think, I'm thinking the first thing is rate increase.
You can't talk about the budget, it's on the agenda. You can't talk about the budget. You have to wait until the
So for items not on the agenda.
And there'll be, and there'll be a time to comment it.
Yeah, you you can comment at that time.
You just can't, you have to sit and wait for us to get through it.
Okay, alright.
And we want to hear it. No, but we we want it, we definitely want to hear. Uh, Sharie.
Um, I just want to make a point that the timer wasn't running when he was speaking and I agree with everything he says. Plus, you're not supposed to comment. I ask questions and nobody makes a comment, so you're not even following your own rules.
The board's allowed to make brief comments.
Well, that isn't what it says in the whole thing.
It it's not necessarily answering questions, it's to comment or qualification, really.
You can stop the timer.
Okay, stop my time.
That was no, I I reclaim my time.
Save it for later, you might need it.
Who's keeping the timer?
The timer had out, so you can say that the time went out.
Yeah, I didn't see the timer, I was looking for Nicholas and didn't see him, but now I'm seeing okay, I thought he had the timer, okay. Uh, anyone else?
That was all three of them, I think.
Well, Steve? Okay, uh, where is one? So now Yeah, can I get uh approval of one?
So for the whole consent calendar, uh President McDonald. You're like seeking approval for the consent calendar.
Yeah, let's just, yeah. Okay, can I get a motion for approval consent calendar unless there are any uh items to be pulled?
I don't have an item to be pulled, I just have a
Corrections.
Comment for the uh qualifications, but staff on the clearance, so if you could uh just go over how we're going to uh send out the notifications. In terms of uh those that don't respond in time, how are we gonna give them feedback to those? That are currently on it.
The, they're not due till the fifteenth, so there's a two week period after that date where we can reach out to the ones that have not responded. And determine if that's because they no longer qualify or if they were unaware. And then we'll just get them re-signed up.
Another board member?
So we're reaching out to people for them to apply for the lower rates.
For people who are already on it.
Renewals.
It's it's renew, it's for those who need to renew.
By June, no, when is that?
We've already sent out the notification on the bill to all customers. So this would just be following up with our current applicants.
Yeah, that's why it's on the consent calendar because it's just business, you know, as usual. Uh, can I get a motion to
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion by Director Saunders and seconded by Director Siemens, all in favor?
With that correction.
With that correction. All in favor? Any approved, uh, disapproved? Nuns, motion passes tied to zero. Financial reports? Let's see, all the consent can
For the financial reports, uh, President McDonald, I think we could just open up uh five A through five D. If there's any public comments or any questions from the board. I think uh at this time we could be happy to take those and I would direct those towards uh Jessica.
Can I, can I step back?
Sure.
So on the uh minutes of April eleventh, uh, what did Director Stovall wear? Considering it says Director Thorneville motion to adopt the agenda, Director Stovall seconded the motion. But then he kind of doesn't exist after that.
Would I, is that true?
I know, no, he exists.
You may want to review that and make sure he's
He was there then.
Yeah, that's why I kept looking going.
He was just real quiet that day.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you for questioning.
I take it back.
Okay, clarifying or uh, and uh again, any public comment, start with, uh, Sharie.
He's not gonna talk.
No.
There's no question.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the board?
Financial report.
Five A through B.
Two, have two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I have a question on page one of nine, um, the third line down on discharge. Um, when do we expect that?
So that's an incorrect account number, that is inactive. And if you go to, I believe it's one twelve. See, I had only missed on my copy. Yeah, so it's one twelve, if you go to page four of nine. The word surcharge and the word supplemental fee are interchangeable, they're the exact same thing. So that's one of the things that's gonna get cleaned up, but I'm not gonna mess with our accounting software until the end of the fiscal year. When we'll start cleaning up all the things that we flagged. So if you go to the beginning, one hundred is the water fund, but the surcharge is the Sweet Water Treatment Plant Fund, which is collected to offset the cost of the treatment plant or to pay down the loan. So that's one twelve, four zero one zero four. And that's where the funds are and not in the other one, because the other one shouldn't exist.
Thank you. I noticed in looking back at past budgets that it was there and then it just stopped.
It made sense, but the one hundred is a water fund. So this is a separate fund dedicated, because it's restricted funds, dedicated to itself, Sweet Water Treatment Plant Fund.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. It says on the, maybe I'm just missing it. Says that will be, it says the financial reports included below for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three ending April thirtieth. Uh, then another you said, I will be running the rest of the financial reports for the prior month instead of July first to present.
Yeah, so the budget to actuals, we don't hard close at the end of the month. It takes about two weeks to reconcile everything from the bank statements, we don't get until after the end of the month. So we do, it takes about fourteen days for us to close. And by the time we have this meeting, if I were to run the April financials for the bu- budget to actuals, they would be, they would be different the next month because they're not closed yet. So everything, check reports, vendor purchasing reports, all of that can be run through the end of April. Or because we already, that that's not something that's gonna change, those are checks, it's hard data. But when it comes to the budget to actuals, we are gonna wait until the following month to the following month's meeting to run that, so they're only through March. Because April's not
But you're still gonna start at the beginning of that fiscal year. Oh, okay, well, that's what, that was where I got confused.
So the check report, if
You said there, you're gonna be running it.
Yeah, so if we were to run the check report from July first to present.
Yeah.
It would be like seventy-five pages, so I'm only doing a month at a time and if you want to refer back, because that information
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I get it now. Alright. I was thinking kind of like, like
It needs to be
To actuals here, I thought that you were only gonna do the prior month and not do from
Yeah, it's only a through, from the beginning of the fiscal year through the prior month, because we haven't hard
Oh, okay, I got it now, okay.
Reconciliations by the time we have this meeting.
Okay, I think I got confused where it said instead of July first to present.
I need to reword it. I read it five different times, I could not get it to sound right, so I will figure it out. I'll just have
Okay.
Bit bullet pointed on which report is run from which date to which date.
Question answered.
Any other questions? The board?
Uh, on page one oh three of the full cash report. Um, on capital reserves, about the sixth one down. Um, there's a charge out of capital reserves. Will the peak, if assuming there's gonna be funds available through FEMA and PGME. Will they go back into that account, assuming that that account paid for someone?
Yeah, any grant funds would go back.
They don't show up on the balance sheet.
Okay, but that's where it'll I assume that's where some of the costs came from, so it'll go back into that account.
So, the the way it will work likely, because a lot of the FEMA money will come in the next fiscal year. We will have a reconciliation going backwards to show the offset of funding from the physical work that was done.
And you could go to either one eleven or or one hundred, right Nick? It can, kind of depends where it came out of. Yes, with the reconciliation, it'll come out, it'll go back to where it came out of.
Yes, because each grant is a little bit different. Depending on the work performed.
But I don't think that one in particular is gonna become, being uh refunded.
Which one are you talking about?
A hundred and six thousand. Isn't that the valves?
If that's the valves, I mean, that's what that is, it doesn't have a detail there to see. But if that's the valves, no, that's a CIP project.
Right, yeah, I think that's what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we know how much the grant funds are going to be, we can always do a journal entry before the year-end close. That is going to account for that money that comes in next fiscal year and then we just reverse it once we get the funds in.
Okay. My guess is the amount is
Some of it will also be reimbursed through through litigation as well. And so that's, that's why likely it will be a reimbursement of the general fund budget. So it'll likely go back into the one hundred budget and we will reconcile it in the one hundred budget.
Thank you.
Uh, public comment, questions?
Yeah, on check number page nineteen of one one, um, three four six eight two. What, what is that one?
Which one are you talking about?
The reimbursement for Nicholas Schneider.
Yeah, what's that reimbursement?
I get a mileage reimbursement that I'm filling out quarterly.
Okay, so at the um meeting that you, when he was hired, I asked that question, if he got a car allowance and mileage, and I was told no.
I don't think it was told no, it's in my contract.
Okay, so number check three four six eight eight. Stovall, three sixty-five.
What page are you on?
Same page.
Oh.
Or at the bottom, no.
Oh, so that was, yeah, so he misplaced his check for attending the board meeting.
Oh, that's a re-.
And we were reimbursed through ADP because he gets paid through our billing system, so we had to cut him a new check.
Okay, ten on page two of four on the year-to-date vendor. Um, check three four seven oh eight.
Wait, are you in vendors or in check report? Because those are check numbers.
Yeah, where are you changing?
Oh, okay, well, there is a check in the current. So, Griswold Industries.
Uh, Griswold, that's Clay Valve.
It's who?
Clay Valve, that is the tree and plant clay valves you did for part of the CIP.
Did what?
The clay valves of
But then, there's an amount in the vendors for hundred and six thousand seven hundred and fourteen eighty-two. But the year-to-date checks only show him getting, them getting ninety-nine thousand. And that's check three four seven oh eight.
Uh, we've done other purchases besides those valves through that same vendor.
Right, but it should show in the year-to-date checks. There's two different figures, it doesn't match up, you know, it's like seven thousand dollars different.
And you're saying this is just for Griswold Industries?
Yeah, and it's page eleven of twelve. And the other year-to-date is two of four. The one states year, year-to-date, a hundred and six, and the vendor one, the ninety-nine.
Did you say eleven of twelve?
That's what I had.
I think it's eleven of twenty-one.
Yeah, it could be.
Why don't you ask me?
I'll see Griswold on that page. I mean, I can, if you want to
Okay, well, okay, here, here it is. It's ninety-nine thousand on the vendor, but on the checks, it's a hundred and six thousand. So page two of four in the vendors, Griswold is on there for ninety-nine thousand.
Isn't that a year-to-date report?
Yeah.
They're both year-to-date.
They're both year-to-date, and then up at the top, it shows he, they received recently a hundred and six. And that's check three four seven oh eight. And that's on the nineteen point one. So somehow there's something that doesn't matter.
I don't think the check report, the check report is into each individual check, it's not, it's not a year-to-date.
So it's a hundred and six thousand, the check that would break nine four twenty-eight.
Right.
But the year-to-date vendor was showing them receiving ninety-nine thousand.
I mean, she has a point, I'll look into that and see why that's not
That's just that, and then one other one. Um, three four seven one nine. It looks like a legal firm, what was that for?
Uh, Sloan Sakai is doing the salary survey, right Nick?
Yes.
That's who we hired to do?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, next, we have information items. And that would be the board report. And I'll ask um And I'll ask, um. Director Stovall to begin. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to report, cause I'm losing my job, it's getting it reworked.
Yeah. Troublemaker. Thank you for. Reporting that. Hoping up. Stepping up, uh, so, uh, Director Saunders?
So the meeting without. I attended our, it was a packer, uh, the report from the Aqua Conference. Basically, one of the, they were thinking about, if all the committees were beyond issues, we're dealing with the headwaters, so. Dealing with wildfire, using our water infrastructure for fire suppression, fire mitigation. And also dealing with ground and, um. Stormwater on the other end, and dealing with what we have to do in our rural. Mountain counties and the headwaters when it comes to the farm and the zero emission. Fleet that we have to do, so those will be updated in the ways that it's accepted, over the majority of items that. The feeding that grants more.
When you say headwaters, what does that mean?
Waters are basically, that's where the water uh begins, so the headwaters are where the water forms and starts all the lakes and rivers for. So basically, it's anywhere where the water comes down, it's from the. Tahoe Basin, basically, from the mountains is where it starts, so we're a part of the headwaters for, it's probably a part of the headwaters and. There's headwaters throughout the US, and one thing which is uh. Similar about all the headwaters is especially for the water districts out there, it's a. Large geographical area, but small population density. So for us, we're dealing with like all of the impacts of the fire, then like El Dorado, matching forests, and we are on that. Built and controlled, and we have our. Four thousand, six hundred-ish customers are on the hook for putting in that extra money. And that's why headwaters are reporting that the state and the Fed need to invest in it, so it's not on the more. Population, so that's what we're trying to uh. Put out to the state and uh, so the information uh. Campaign that, you know, water comes from forest to top, so to let everybody know where. The water originates from, and if they don't invest in it, economically, it's gonna. Effect them downstream, because it's gonna affect the water quality that you're doing there.
Okay, no, Treasury, nothing, okay, not this time, I did, I forgot what it was, okay. Director Siemens?
Um, I have nothing to report.
Alright, um, I have a little bit to report, I. I attended the Aqua JPA Spring Conference in Monterey. And like to share a little bit about the liability program there. Um, it's a ten percent rate increase for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and the first one in fifteen years. Current, a few large major losses impacting prices, fires and natural. Disasters.
What was the ten percent for?
Uh, a general increase in the premiums for liability.
Lige, that's a church.
It has to do with the wildfires that everyone experienced in California.
Yeah, saying acts of nature, um. What's that, Steve?
It's, that's moment, I mean, acts of nature, happens every year.
But, right, but this was a. The amount, you know, the impact.
There was over thirty million dollars in claims that were related to wildfires this last year.
That's from Aqua or JPA?
JPA.
Just to the JPA, correct.
And then as far as the property program, just two hundred and eighty-seven members of over four hundred. Um, it's a twenty percent rate increase, and they've been increasing for the last three years.
For what?
Catastrophic events, including the wildfire. So we should expect a fifteen to twenty percent increase at, as of January, as of July this year, my first. And workers' comp program has about half of the members. Uh, participating. And, um. Rates have stayed flat or decreased over the past ten years.
Why is that, where they have happened?
Uh, risk management. Yeah.
So basically, there are four hundred sixty-six water agencies and associates that are part of Aqua. And they can be part of the insurance program, so not all the members are part of Aqua JPA, that's. The separate entity that covers the insurance. And we're covered for uh, property, liability, workman's comp, and employee benefits. But usually we get refunds, cause it's, they built their own joint power insurance authority, and they don't keep a profit. So basically, they use the pools, and if there's any leftover from the pools. They use the pools to um, offset any uh, thing that they have to pay out in claims. And anything that's left over comes back to the agents. The different agencies and refunds, so the last couple of years, we got refunds for uh, workers' comp and property and. Uh, liability, one year we got three checks back. This year, there was no profit, the first time they had to take from the reserves to cover claims. So no refunds, and that's basically the way it's built, that they have a reserve, so they don't have to increase the rates. Whatever, and enter the reserve, so now, the rates are gonna have to go up.
And it's direct.
Who pays for the rate?
That's what we pay in hard, so that's what I'm talking about, our insurance, that's what they're going to do next year, they've been flat for a pretty long time, and. If you wanna talk about the cliff, the California wildfire insurance plan, if you, that's basically uh. Uh, that was the first vote we had in twenty eighteen where. They decided to make their own insurance for wildfire, because no one was covering wildfire, or they were covering it up. So they did that to help stabilize it, but. When the catastrophic fires were facing the claims, that's when we get everything with it.
So overwhelmed that buffer. Even with the buffer. Um, then, and Sergeant Saunders said there's four hundred and sixty-six total members, so. In liability program, it's about sixty-five percent of that number, that's part of that program, about fifty-five percent in the property. About forty-five in the workman's comp, and then the last one is employee benefits, about fifty-five percent again, and. Metal co-crosses are escalating. Rapidly also expect a ten percent or higher increase on January and in the future years. So it's part of the five percent CPI you're hearing about. It's doubled. So may not be factored in, I don't know if it's part of the pool of uh, that they monitor. Um, yes.
So, if, uh, if like half of the members are. In the program, is there, and they figured out the reason why they went elsewhere? Are they getting, are they getting cheaper rates, or have we looked into it, or?
I don't know, I'll ask.
Yes, there are other insurance providers that are out there. Um, there are other availabilities, you could always shop around and find different rates. Uh, but there is a majority of. As was stated, the Aqua members are part of the JPA, so we, we could definitely look around. Uh, I don't think you're gonna be saving a, a great deal of money, but it's worth, it's worth a look.
Two things that the Aqua JPA knows that we probably aren't getting from the other insurances are refunds, so. No other insurance is giving you money back, and two is, they have an active risk management where they come out to the district, then they go over. If our staff were employees and safety can give us recommendations and help with uh, any policies and employee issues, and. They actually cover us for uh, any uh, employee legal stuff as well, so that's the benefit we get from them. That should probably like, I think, that's funny, sure, so, those are the things we can factor if we're looking for cost.
And they can't make a profit.
They can, but they choose not to.
They choose not to.
But we still need to look and see if there's anything cheaper out there. We should.
Like, and, and, and this, and this, uh, one item, it's about fifty-five percent combined overall participation, patient of the. Overall, overall, um. Uh, I went to the Aqua Conference in addition to JPA since I was there. And uh, I thought it was very informative, I learned a lot of new things, um. Met a lot of nice people, um, made some good connections and learned a lot more about, about acronyms. More acronym, in fact, here's a supplement. And, and then a supplement to this for the long acronyms and more. Acronyms, so that's for you.
But you've had that one for two years. You've had that big one for two years.
Yeah, I'm just adding to it.
Can you give us an example of an acronym?
Um.
Aqua.
JPA.
Oh, or American.
Yeah.
Aqua.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's the initials.
Oh, yeah, just abbreviation, initials, and some, some acronyms are getting so long, you. So, um.
There's a lot.
And, and uh, I learned quite a bit more about all the committees, commissions and boards you've been on. It kind of puts things together, are there that many, but there are. And uh, and then the value and existence of these state and regional boards. Uh, they all work together or can work together, uh, somewhere comes to mind, strength in numbers, um. We may have an interest and someone else may have an interest in when you go lobby, if you just, well, I'd like to, but if you have several, so. I got it, made sense, and a lot of, uh, a lot of connections, a lot of good stuff happening over there, I'm glad I went. Um. Uh. Developing relationships and neighboring str- uh, districts and regions, uh, one particular. Case I brought up last time, but to reemphasize, um, there's a lot of vendors that are there, and this one particular. Uh, director, he made a connection with the vendor about a solar. Uh, tank recycling pump. For the storage tanks, would save them millions over a few years, because of that simple, and then, uh, and then. Nicholas and I were mixing, and I was talking to a GM in Southern Cal that. Doesn't have any storage and expensive water to boot. And just by talking, uh, Nicholas came on and started discussing with him the potential to. Sell water to them, if. Appropriate, but that's where a potential connection could be made, money for us and savings for them. Instead of buying it from their normal channels, but I'm just saying that was good for that potentially, and other reasons, that was just one that I was involved somewhat with. And then, um. Um. That's, that was pretty much it, uh, that's all I have to report on. So, um, with that in mind, let's go to legislative liaison report.
Yep, so the packet of all the uh. Positions that we have and oppose and support. And they have one update to maybe thirteen thirty-seven, and uh. That was one of the water rights legislation, and we were asking if um, if that amended, and unfortunately, they amended it even worse. They added a pre nineteen fourteen water rights to that one, so that wasn't initially in there, so. Now they've uh, even made it more restrictive. And there'll be some bill that will be uh, bringing forward, uh. The one that's kind of uh, puts a set limit on all of reservoirs, that's AV. Seven fifty-four, I, uh, when that act was, that was uh, brought up by all the uh. Operations managers from PTWA, and the GM does have an update on the. Cars new act, cause he went to that, that was brought up in the Energy Committee, and they have some uh. Updates on that, and Nicholas actually went to the Capitol to uh, testify on that, so.
Yes, thank you for that, uh, Director Saunders, uh, so unfortunately. Uh, not great news for all public water, um, utility districts, public agencies, um. CAR, or the California Air Resource Board adopted what they're referring to as their advanced clean fleet regulation. Uh, basically, what this means is, starting in the year twenty twenty-four. It is going to uh, require all agencies to start the process of converting to. What they're referring to as zero emissions, so that means it could either be an electric vehicle or a hydrogen-powered vehicle. Um, some of the arguments that we have expressed are the lack of electrical infrastructure. And the lack of obviously hydrogen infrastructure. Um, currently, our district has fourteen vehicles. That are all, well, I wouldn't say all, but are, most are nearing or over their life expectancy. So, the, the major unfortunate uh, part of this regulation is. It will force the district as we replace some of those vehicles. To um, invest in much more pricey technology. There are a few exemptions that you can util- uh, uh, utilize to uh, extend this. However, it does create uh, staff having to uh. Reach out and apply for these exemptions, so currently, um, I foresee us. Trying to get an infrastructure delay extension, simply because the grid cannot support these electric vehicles. Um. And, and that will be hopefully where we can uh, uh, have some sort of relief from this, but. The majority of, of agencies, they would like to have them by, in thirteen years from. Twenty twenty-six to be fully zero emission vehicles, all of the fleet. So.
Yeah, every time you buy a vehicle from now, so if you buy two, one has to be a zero emission, so that's, that's the challenge.
Yeah, that starts in twenty twenty-four.
Just buy one.
And that's, that's basically what.
So twenty thirty-nine, is that what we're saying? Twenty thirty-nine?
It's twenty, yes, twenty thirty-nine, twenty forty, by twenty forty, everything has to be converted.
With scooters?
Yeah. Yeah, so there, there, there are, like I said, there are some exemptions. Um, so we're, we're gonna explore all those exemptions, however. Um, it appears as though we are going to have to comply with this to some extent.
Yes, yes.
Yep, we brought that out of the. And then the other uh, meeting that we've been going to is the Water Resource Control Board, and the staff on the. What do you use efficiency conservation bills, that's the one that's gonna have the indoor and outdoor budget for the district, so we've been working on that. Outdoor budget part and the business, um. That continues to uh, be a work in progress, and hopefully they will. Continue working on our land data, I know they gave us some back, but we're supposed to get that back, but. So far, we haven't updated it based on the twenty nineteen numbers, we're about. Two hundred and ninety-four acre feet off of the district, so we're over by two ninety-four acre feet, which is. Not bad for a year, so. If the land data comes in reasonably, we should be able to meet the state's budget.
So, I'll just give a quick update on the lamb data. We did meet with uh, DWR, both, um, Adam, myself. And um, all of the staff members at DW, uh, DWR. Basically, uh, they were assessing parcels that were not all, uh, part of our service area. So, we have submitted additional data for them to consider, and we are. They are reassessing our district, and they are working directly with both Adam and myself on. Uh, correcting that data set, so we're hoping that we do see some relief based upon. It went from uh, ninety-seven percent, they uh, they increased it to ninety-four percent. And uh, I would say it's probably closer to about eighty percent is what, what I would like to see them come with. If the lamb, if the aerial photograph, aerial photography doesn't um, provide. The relief that we're looking for, we can do what they are referring to as a door-to-door or a drive-by analysis. And that would help to uh, assess some of the more uh, irrigated areas.
Nicholas, it, would that be a, a sample? Of the, of the district, or just, or, or a hundred percent?
No, they typically do ten to fifteen percent, and then extrapolate that data throughout the district, so. We can take them to areas that are, are more readily irrigated. And they could get a, a better picture for how the district operates and how the district looks.
Thank you.
Really, I have a question for Mike. Are, are we making any headway, well, you have it here, we're supporting this, we're opposing this, I mean, as well as we're opposing, especially the thirteen thirty-seven. Um, I mean, do we have any kind of indicator that we're? We're making any headway in, in that?
Un- unfortunately.
Adam Quinones is probably the biggest proponent who is, has his pulse on all of them, and. Sadly, um, it's a push, one of those five water rights bills are probably gonna pass. So we just have to try and make it where it's uh. As least harmful to us as possible, but. A lot of this stuff is now in appropriations, so that's the committee where they see what the budgetary uh. Analysis is. Analysis is and then when it comes out of appropriations, then that's when we'll know how far they're moving forward. But so far. All of these bills that we are opposed to are moving.
And if I could just add a little bit to that, it's it's still very early in the process. Um there's still movement to be had. Um like Director Saunders said. Likely one, maybe two of those bills will be passed. I would say the best bet we have is to soften the language or or convert the language into something that's less damaging for the whole state. Um if you look at some of the bills, they're 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 basically looking at taking the whole wider water rights uh. System within the state and and completely changing it, completely starting from scratch. And it's it's a really uh untenable position and. I think that many of the people who are 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 against these or opposing these bills realize that. It's unfortunate that the writers just don't realize it yet.
Um it says disparate position. And then you've got the support and then coalition, but some of them don't. So who's making the disparate decision?
We vote on them here at the meeting. So we've had meetings where we've voted on what the position was in the legislature.
When was that?
We did it.
We did.
They've been at the last several board meetings.
So the legislative report would do that and the action items we actually. Oppose. So the these are all the ones that we voted on at the. And the coalitions are some of the uh matters that we've started and joined with so. Some are C S D A, some are. Some that are empty, we are in the coalitions and just have to put more into there. So many and see, but basically. Most of them were in the opposite coalitions with.
What was the agenda? I don't think that.
Back at the last two board meetings, one was under consent and previous to that, there was a lengthy. Uh staff report that went over a majority of these bills. I believe it was March.
Well, one of the things that we stepped back a little bit, we were talking about vehicles and life expectancy and we were not necessarily expecting the type of. Ominous, you know, requirements for the new purchases. As a person who is approaching my life expectancy, I have the expectation of my wife's opinion, I'm not really ready to put myself in yet. So perhaps the first thing we're gonna do is take a look at the projected life expectancy and see and not necessarily dash out or replace. Let's see if maybe it has a little longer life than we anticipate.
We are exploring that as well as exploring purchasing some vehicles before. The the twenty twenty four deadline so that we can get in a bit under the wire.
Next, for the director Saunders, do you have any more? Operations managers report. Adam, please, thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah. Um. So on the treatment side, um no outside normal operations, our production and demand was still. So kind of low. Um I think we're we're starting to see it pick up the last couple of weekends with our weather, weather heating up. So kind of on average, you know, our gross water use first time, our treated water production versus time um kind of down a little bit, which is good. I mean, that's the gross water is what the state looks at. So that's. That's still below our our average. Um second page is kind of summed up um a paragraph summary of the work we're doing and different different activities throughout the system. Um so I go over each one, but I think questions towards the asking now or or at the end of the of the report here. I just go through just some pictures of work we've been doing. Um. We've been is really, really busy month just getting ready for season. Um so a lot of uh continued clearing of the canals to make sure we have good flow throughout. Guys, uh a lot of hours and a lot of hard work. Cause you're kind of running that. Um next day you see a chimney flat liner placement. So we had whole crew there doing a. A treated water liner placement inside on chimney flat court. Um it turned out well, it took about. About two weeks to complete. Um we're actually finishing up the paving today out there to. Kind of complete that project out.
And Adam, if I could just jump in on that real quick. I'd just like to add that uh our new uh. Uh Liz, our uh executive assistant has started a YouTube channel and uh. I was actually out while they were replacing and putting in the hydrant valves and one of the shut off valves for the system and was able to videotape our guys. Doing an exceptional job, putting in that that portion. So if it's not up now, it should be up very soon on our our YouTube channel so that the public can see. Some of the work that our that our operators are doing.
Thank you. I'll talk a little bit more to that when we get to the C I P portion of it. Um next picture is just uh some of the upper canals in the burned area. Um here closely there you can see the how deep the ditch is and that ditch is usually that upper canal is usually three to four feet deep. In this section, we saw about two to three inches of depth, which is obviously not enough. Space to bring our irrigation water down. Um so we. I worked on that um for almost two weeks straight towards the end of April, once we were able to gain access up there. We also had three canal line projects we did um. Towards the end of the month and oh in the beginning of May, first first couple of days in May. Couple down Slager Mine and one up country near near Tunnel Hill. So those. Yeah.
If I could jump one more time, just to, I'm not sure if the gentleman's still in the room who made a comment in regard to irrigation water. I just want to point out that if you can look at the pictures and and get a hold of of and see what the canals look like. Part of the decision to uh maneuver the irrigation scheduling. Had to do with the ability to move water through the system. Um you'll notice, as was being stated, the fire caused quite a bit of silting in. The canals and we physically weren't able to move water through the system. Um this has been uh a fight also because we weren't able to access the areas. It seemed every time we would be able to get access, there'd be either more rain, more snow. And when we would get to the area, we would be doing more damage to the infrastructure. Because of the mud and the debris that was there as opposed to trying to fix the problem. So. So yes, there was quite a bit of water in the system, but there was also maintenance issues that needed to be taken care of as well along the way.
So update on the. Update on that water, we actually just started pushing water down through the canals um yesterday and today. So you'll probably start seeing it showing up and. As we get get towards in the canals for our for June first start. And we basically finished, we finished clearing that up right. Um it was like May second or something. We actually were able to get it clear. We actually could. Can set our full summer head.
The first bit um is that along one ninety three?
Uh which picture are you talking about?
Vegetation clearing.
Yeah, it's crossing Kramer Road.
It runs along one ninety three? And that doesn't even really look like a ditch. It looks like a.
Yes, this longest side of the road. Yeah, it crosses road uh by central gate there. Yeah, by the time we get down there, we um it's kind of the end of the, you know. Yeah.
Nobody will notice it's filled. Blackbirds.
And then the paving or the cover up of that water replacement, is that how it's gonna be left or is that the paving company coming in and after replacement paving?
They're out there today. Yeah, we so we, yeah, we didn't um we didn't finish it to pavement graves. We're gonna do it twice. So we left the rough base and they're gonna finish it on.
I did notice that there is some water running through the ag water ditches. Was it available for people? That will be. That are signed up to have ag water.
So it's available June first. Um he's right now, we we push the water in the canal. A lot of times we uh get to the end of the canal and then we. Kind of lose it. It kind of fills up voids in different fractures of rock up here where it's online. Um so really. And then we go through and turn all the services on and now now all the services will be on by June first. So it's not available until June first.
Okay, uh one, is there an ability to give notifications on leaving the valves open at the beginning of the season? Uh so they get the flush, not the mud into there. Cause that's one thing we don't ever do. Um if I can get something out. Uh for the customers to do. So they're notified that that's always like my big problem is I get. The first couple hours of nothing but mud if I have my valve open and I thought about it ahead of time.
Yeah, so once we get to that, once we get to charging the pipelines, um that will be a part of it. I was planning on saying out some notifications once we actually. Get closer to season, so a couple of weeks. So we're just trying to get water down down the canal right now.
And then on this uh summary of field work activities, you have events. Is that times going out? Or is that like? Yeah, like you have meter reads of forty five. Are those forty five meters are read or forty five times somebody has gone out? Or add multiple meters?
Um that's single events. So that's single meters.
So it.
One, one would one meter read in there. So like a meter read could cover. Person calling in and saying they they want their meter read for escrow or something like that or. One meter read in there could be us doing every single read. We only do that every two months. Right now.
Okay, cause I'm saying like you have forty five events and then it's fifty hours to do forty five events. That means. Um.
Yeah.
You're spending. A little over an hour for each one.
Well, see, yeah, so there's there's needs, there is needs context, context to that. So one of those meter reads was. A field technician, two and a half days doing every single automated meter read. So that's gonna be about twenty four. Twenty four hours, yeah.
And then um we were gonna have locations of of work being done, like the vegetation clearing, you have nine. Nine events, which would be nine locations.
Yeah.
Um and you were gonna give us a list of those nine locations so we would see. Uh the areas that were being uh cleared.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can.
Which phone is that again?
It's gonna make the packet. I mean, it's gonna make my board report, you know, fifty pages long, but I can do that.
Well, no, I mean, you only got. However, many checks. And I think that one, that one uh program that you just put up online is giving us. All that information.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it is every, every asset has a location. It's all based on our G I S system. So as I say, work they apply their work to us, yeah.
If you want to do individual. Events, let's let's. Limited to certain ones. I don't think we need to do all of them. I don't really want to have every event. Listed and and provided. There are certain things that. I'm sorry?
You're up there. I hear you over me.
Oh, I I I think if you want to do vegetation clearing, that's fine, you know, but there's a, there's a bunch of other events on there that I don't. I don't think it would be pertinent to include.
No, what what I had asked for a couple of months ago was that like when we're. Uh gun hiding sections of uh. Um ditch, we were going to have that those locations, you know, like. Uh Adam said slinger mine, uh a section of slinger mine and up country by the tunnel, that takes care of those three. But then you also had, we also asked about clearing a vegetation where we have bad. You know, vegetation areas and we were gonna get uh an area. Listed that if you had nine, then we would have like nine areas. Let me back into this, but um. I know, I'm like, there's the back of my head, I'm talking to.
Yeah, you're you're okay. You don't have to talk to the T V.
Your voice is coming down over me, so it's creeping me out, even though you're that much taller than I am. But um.
Um yeah, I'll brainstorm with Nick to try to get how to best present it.
Yeah, cause it's just weird after areas like you did, uh half of uh the Cherry Acres ditch. Off of Cherry Acres Road where. You know, then did you do the other section that was off of Kramer or that other one is off one ninety three or, you know, that type of thing. Um but yeah, I think more communication for irrigation would be better than less. Um that's been. Uh the irrigation mantra for the whole.
I plan on doing that. It's, yeah. It'll be, it's gonna be on the website and you watch more notifications going out.
Okay.
So is there a place on the website where you're putting this information?
We're slowly working with um Liz where we have irrigation has a spot on there. Yeah, we'll have, we'll update it um as we send out notifications and then each notification plan to have like a link to. To that. Obviously the calls won't, but we'll just, you know, reference the website and saying, you know, check irrigation for any updates. Um so the last kind of last page of questions right now. Um so I would like the C I P program. Um Arbor Lake Trails at Paving Project, that was yesterday. Um today, they're gonna, they sound like they're finishing up tomorrow. I have a couple of things will be finishing up. That's part of the. Waterline replacement, chimney flat court. And then I want to summarize that water on replacement. So the original engineering estimate, if we went out to big, got a contractor deal, was a hundred and thirty three thousand approximately. District staff and knowledge here, um us just doing internally was eighty five, eighty five thousand. So we. We saved quite a bit of, quite a bit of money there um doing that internally. Um. Crew's got a lot of good experience. You know, we have a couple of guys that have done it a lot here. Uh but a lot of other guys got a lot of good experience and. Learn more about how, you know, installing and. Stalling new systems like that. So when they come across breaks and stuff, it really like clicks with them. So that's because we have, you know, we kind of have a younger distribution crew. So that's good. Um the condition assessment, a castle came here a couple of months ago. Um we revisited the burn area. He hadn't seen the burners, went up there, took him to the diversion. Just a couple more um items there. Kind of the last thing he's waiting on me actually and us is getting um looking at the treated water lines. And I just haven't been able to fit it in the schedule yet. So we're working to get that done, but it's just hard to fit it in with. The other activities we have going right now and just limited staff, so. We'll work on that. Um annual canal line, the project that we did this year. Um the little over a thousand feet. Between Slager Mine, um right below Tunnel Hill Hydro, Volcano Hill Road. Tunnel Hill probably does a pretty good sized project. Um we had some voids up there, you know, six feet deep. So we're. Bringing gravel up there, uncutting concrete. And so it was a, it was a good effort. Um.
It's a lot wider up there too.
It's a lot wider, yeah, your capacity. Yeah, it's like the Slager Mine, that's towards the end of that one little, one little section. So it's a pretty small. I mean comparative, we did um. About twenty yards between the two and Slager Mine, I contributed about a hundred yards of concrete. So it's a big difference. Um going through the. The next thing, kind of pressure regulating valves, S U R train plant. They were installed last week. They were installed last week. Um so they're in place. It was kind of stressful day that day because we're shutting the whole plant down, getting all these valves installed. They're not operating yet. The guy was actually supposed to be here today. We postponed until Thursday to actually. Sync them with the pumps and our pump pumping out there. So we're excited to have those working and I think. They have shown the last couple of years um. Replacing our uh P R Vs, pressurizing the valves in the system, we've seen actually, you know, less brakes over time. So I think these are gonna help. Especially some of the um courts within Arbor Lake Trails are real thin wall PVC and this is gonna help that that pressure surge and so. Uh it's general activities. Yeah, we focused a lot on capital improvement projects this month. We had a really short construction season when we had about. Five, six weeks from this winter we had and now irrigation season. Um so we got, I think we got quite a bit done. Um. Uh we had D S O D inspections for Stumpy and for Walton Lake. So we uh. Free standard inspection, we have some small maintenance items we need to take care of. Um the spillway is one of them, which we'll be working on once it stops spilling towards the end of in the summer. We were scheduled last summer to do it, but um the mosquito fire derail their claims are.
Okay, what's D S O D?
De- Department of Safety of Dams.
I don't know, Mike. I'll check later.
It's actually Division Safety of Dams. Um so we exercised both valves, so um there. We we internally do it every through, every year. They required every three years to witness as an exercise. We have a thirty inch. Butterfly valve under the dam in our howbunker towards the end. So we exercise those valves and then our our Walton Lake valve, which is a lot smaller as well. Um working with Water Smart um to get months. Um, working with Water Smart um to get monthly reads into the system. Sure has to be a lot more complicated than I originally thought. Um, just how data goes from collecting to Tyler back into Water Smart without giving a lot of errors to customers. So. We've done a couple of trial runs, but we're still, we're working on it hopefully with next couple of months while I figure it out. Um, requests for public assistance. This is through FEMA and COW O E S. Um. We identify, this is from the emergency de- emergency declaration into December into uh into January. We covered um Siltation Upper Canal. Um. Failure at uh by structure five and the siltation of. Specifically Walton Lake. That's what was all the most impact. So. That fund looks favorable there. Um, I just, I just had a meeting with them last week. Um, so the siltation already completed. So obviously we did that last week. Um, structure five, we're working on that right now. So the siltation, we put twenty five thousand, the road, uh rotor pair about seventy five and then. About two hundred, two hundred and fifty per. Um, removing soap from the reservoirs. And we're working through the process. We'll have. In and out. So it's basically, it seems pretty. Well, I guess it, it seems like we're, we're gonna get funding for it. And how it works, it's seventy five percent. Um, FEMA, FEMA covers. Uh, twenty five percent, the state and the district covers. Among that twenty five percent, the state covers seventy five percent. And then the, we can cover six. So we, the district will be responsible for six and a half percent. So every hundred thousand would be sixty five hundred dollars, which is. The impact we're seeing, especially the, the structure, the roadside structure five, that's pretty significant. Um, so we're. We're working on getting that repaired now. Um, so. Um, and then I mean tomorrow in our C S, um, we'll go over some more piping up, up country there. Um. Working on the U S, the Water Smart Grant for next year for canal lining. Um, engage with the Bureau of Reclamation. Trying to get that, that, all that lined up and fully awarded so you can report that project next year. Um, last page is the, the monthly water demand assessment. Um. Uh, I don't, I don't have much to say about it. I guess, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of on track. We're lower than we have in the previous years. So I think we're. Still doing pretty good. It's right, interest to see what summer brings with how much demand we have. Any questions outside of, we already discussed?
Eyes, go ahead.
Just the one thing is, um, if we have a debrief on the um leaders put in just to follow up on the breaks and stuff after the facts.
I already beat him on that.
Okay, we'll be right along. No, good. So, look, so meter debrief, what, what exactly?
How many breaks do we have after the meters we put in? How many do you guys go back and fix after the five? Update on that.
Okay, I make, okay. Let me think about how, I'll have to think about how to present that. These. Breaks are breaks, right? It could be.
Yeah.
Were you talking about on the customer side or on the line side? Customer side, okay. So it's on the customer side he's talking about.
So within a couple of months.
Yeah, okay.
We may not have a good picture of all that as well. Because they're not gonna always report those breaks to us, but we can put together some sort of a presentation that goes over the final uh. Project and, and add in some uh, you know, customer information and feedback.
Or like which ones you've been notified to uh respond to.
We definitely do that. It says, I don't. Each D, each, every break's different. So I basically can summarize the breaks associated with. A customer service. I think that's, I think it's as granular as we can get.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Questions. Um, those cracks and voids that when you got the flow going through for maintenance to clean it through. Those would be slow leaks. I can take it that.
When you're cracks and voids, you're referring to like open canal?
Yeah, and the open canal. So before the lining, it'll be a slow leak. Obviously, it leaks out through the winter and fills up again when the. The, the canal's full.
Seems like swimming holes.
Huh? Swimmy holes?
That you can't swim in, like there's.
Oh, yeah. So, so, so say like, so say there's a, there's the. The slope of the canal changes, or you have like a, a hard rock or something and it kind of cascades down. It'll eat over, eat away that over time. So it makes a big. A big hole. But though that section that has water in all year.
Hmm.
So you didn't really see him until you, you know, we went in there and.
Is there a lot of water? Is, is it kind for the maintenance waste, but the maintenance of flushing? Is that something that we need to account for or keep track of? And, and I understood that we started the flow, not being on irrigation committee, because irrigation customer a week in advance to get the. The uh.
From the now.
Yeah.
And he said two weeks. Oh, two weeks.
We just start, well, we, well, we, we chart, it was basically charging the ditches, right? So we have, so like to, today, for example, they went from. Right outside of town. Down to almost Traverse Creek. That's a whole day of just that initial head of water pushing down, down the dish. So it takes. Each canal from the Kelsey Canal, um, from the main dish down, you know, it takes probably four, five days to get the water all the way to the end.
Hmm.
And then once they get all the way to the end, you know, they're clearing debris the whole entire way. And then they kind of have to do all adjustment for a couple of days. And then they get all the services installed and turned on.
Hmm.
It's every, at least like every year, like the, the. Last board meeting where you have a different service, a customer is asking for a different allotment of water. So we have to go and make those adjustments.
Hmm.
Once again.
Uh, comment I wanted to make, uh, another opportunity that Nicholas during his reconnaissance portion of the vendor kiosks, he learned about. A, a, a more economical way of uh lining the canals.
Yeah, you didn't mention that.
Okay, so I may take away from the stunder there in his board report, but that, that's something to take note of. And uh, before the big butt portion of uh the public, when uh Ross Lee, who's. Given comment, uh, he did give praise and accolades to your crew. Did you catch that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you.
What are you talking about?
He knew what he was talking about. Okay.
Yeah, we have, yeah. You have a really good crew that I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's consistent with what we've heard lately.
I mean, just, just, I mean, you can, and say just since September. The amount of work and the amount of stress, the amount of hours, you know, we've all put in here and to maintain services. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Sherry.
Just a comment on the capital improvement program, ready out longer men and replacements. Maybe is that the chimney blackboard? It's not noted there.
That one is, yeah. That's the only one we did this year.
Maybe it's a label on my desk. That's the only one to get labeled.
Hey, um, Mr. Dow.
I got a question. Um. Are these guys doing the construction down here and putting in the electrical cables all around town?
Yeah.
Have they nicked any of your water lines down there? Because what we've got between south and arctis. There's a, a leak coming out of the road in the middle of the road. It's just constant, never ending. It's like, oh my God, I hope they didn't hit one of our pipes.
Yeah, so that leak's coming by the telephone pole. Yeah, that one is actually intrigued a lot. Or these. It's on heart.
Right in the middle of the road, right?
Yeah, I think it's on heartness, right?
Arctis is out.
Yeah, we investigated that one. There was no, there's no chlorine in that water. So that's some kind of perch ground water or something. Yeah. Yeah, but they, so they have, and we've, you know, been working with P G and reimbursement of those breaks.
I noticed we took a walk up near the nature behind the elementary school. And when there's trees down everywhere over the ditch, it's like. You guys have cleared it. You did a great job. It's gonna be busy, busy, busy.
Yeah.
Trees everywhere.
Yep. It's been around. That was down here too, up country. Yeah. Yeah, no, it's been a challenge for sure.
Speaking of vendors, one of the vendors. And then I wouldn't protect you. So um. We can get a, we can get a district dog. It's. There were, there were two, uh, they, they're out of Roseville. So there was uh two Labrador Retrievers. One was a black lab, never chucked lab. Standard training. So they trained to uh pick up rain. So.
Lab is a little water. Okay.
Well, the fire department has a therapy dog down in third valley. So.
We'll move on now to the Water Resources Managers Report and the Sanitary Sewer Management Plan, S S N P. Okay.
Uh, we got eighty five annual inspections this last month, two escrows. Um. Brian was finally able to take a little bit of time off. And so the. Annuals were a little bit lower than normal, but on our little chart, you can tell last couple of years, I think it's just a little thing in general. So we'd be hovering around eighty five maybe instead of the hundred, you know, something he usually does. Uh, we had no spill. It was pretty dry, only at that point three, three of raining. We had a little bit of issues with the Station sixteen Pico Vale service. It's the one that gives us all of our data for flow. It was down for a couple of days, but we got. The Pico Vale guy out there and it was fixed that day. Uh, Brian ran into an interesting issue in A L T. They were doing some road maintenance and didn't get. Us a call. And so no one knew it's eight or nine. There was a main sewer line, the grabby feed lines. Running right across the road. So luckily he saw it and stopped and got it marked. Um.
Hmm.
We had the markets and dam reports submitted last month also. I attended an Earth Day event for public outreach with the library. And. I met, we, W D R update dish was a little slow last month. We did have a meeting with Bennett. Mostly to cover everything else they're doing with us, but I did meet with one of them today. We're working on the Station sixteen upgrade. We ran around that today. Um. Still in talks about like the communication with the county. I'm gonna be digging into that here soon. I had a couple big reports that were due this last month that have been. Trying to get figured out, but they're, they're done. So, um. My wonderful. Outlook for weather is a little outdated. Um. Noah kind of gave us the whole, it's like either or, or you're gonna be hot or cold or a lot of rain or no rain. I did wanna update it, but I figured I'd leave it. Because their projection was that we're supposed to have that rain in the beginning. And then it was supposed to be in the seventies, it's certainly in the seventies the rest of May. And obviously, we know that's wrong. Because now it's super hot. But the cool part is we are at two hundred and forty percent of our normal snowpack.
Yeah, well.
A lot.
Yeah, that was the good thing. Last time, I mean, last year we were at two forty, but then it all disappeared. So.
Yeah.
Next time we still have it. So uh. That may be a issue as it's coming downstream. So.
And we're still spilling.
The um S S N P update. So the state last December came out with a, it's a reissue of an old order. They basically want, the, the major changes were. The way that, like how we have the legally responsible person has to certify every year that there's still that person. If there's any changes, you have to submit a new form. That was a little bit different. And then they wanted our. Our current sewer system management plan uploaded online, which already was, but it didn't catch. So it like. Set a reminder and alarmed me every time that it needs to be in by June fourth. So it's already on there. Um, I already did the recertification for the L R O. And then there was another one. Um. They want you to redo your, it's basically the annual report is what they call it. It's a questionnaire about the. The C D S fields. Um, that one I just turned in today. But we do have a whole update required by twenty twenty six. So I, and I thought it was due. This month. That's why it's on the agenda as an update. But I went to a couple of meetings and they said, no, it's not required to be updated. It's required to be uploaded online. So I have some time to get it updated. But. It's already such a great report from. The previous Water Resources Manager. So there's not much updating I have to do. But they did change a couple of words. The spill report or the overflow report became the spill report. So there's some. Dramatical changes that need to happen, but got a few years. So. Just be updated for that.
Some board burners, Tom. Go ahead, Steve.
Alexis, when you, uh, when you, you didn't even give your report and you say two uh, uh, escrows, what does that mean?
So we're required to do uh change of ownership, like.
Uh, people selling their properties.
So just A L T.
And you guys have got to be in on the escrow to make sure everything's okay.
We have the annual reports, then we have the escrow, um, inspections. Sorry, we have the annual inspections and then the escrows. The escrows are a little bit more in depth. So we go in and make sure that those systems are up to date so that the new ownership doesn't have to worry about it for.
Okay.
Hopefully a little while.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Professor Simmons.
Um, and I'm sort of flipping back cuz there's a um nine hundred dollar charge um for a spill. Is that for sampling or is that for?
I think I'd have to look at the reports, but that would be the only cost that would come out unless we had to grab like some emergency cleanup items, but usually those.
I think it was Station, I think it was at Station sixteen. Okay.
And then we had one that was. Got, there's that seasonal, there's a seasonal creek that runs behind there.
Right.
And if it's flowing, no matter what happens, if it makes it to a waterway of the United States, we have to sample above and below. And so I know we had to sample one time. So that was probably the charge.
Okay.
But I can get it, I can dig through the stuff for sure and let you know.
Okay, if it's in the, in his, his budget. Um, adds on actual costs this year for that station. So that's why I was like, hmm. It's gotta be sampling of something that I couldn't remember if it was because of the spill or. Whatever your other things were. Okay, thank you.
Last but not least, we have the General Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, President McDonald. I'll do a quick overview of, of some of the activities. You'll note that uh participated in Aqua State Legislative Committee and. This is uh a great resource for where we develop most of the positions that come from. Our legislative um support and opposition. Um, we don't necessarily agree one hundred percent with what they do. However, we do use a lot of their analysis to um, to help understand. Um, also participated in a call with the Mountain Counties Re- uh Resource. Uh, Water Association and State Water Resource Control Board to discuss the water use efficiency standards. And some of the issues that we're facing. Um, we are, I, I think official, we have. One more signature and we will have our investment bank account open so we can start moving our investments around. And taking advantage of the, the market and CDs and other um, um, new investments. It's been quite a lengthy process because the, uh, we have several bank accounts that were out of date. And so we have been working on making sure that all of those are up to date as well as opening up this new bank account. Additionally, U S Bank hasn't been the most responsive, but once we actually found the right person, we were able to get some headway. Uh. I'm gonna uh include this here. I have a, a little talk about voluntary agreements. So I'm gonna skip over that and then talk about that at the end. Um, we did, uh, held a special board meeting for legal services. We are waiting for one more interview that will take place in June. Um, again, went uh to the card meeting. Um, to testify, also attended the Upper American River Watershed. Uh, Planning Advisory Group Meeting. This is um, a uh. Group of uh meetings that are being held by the Eldorado Water Authority Agency, excuse me, that are. Going to be submitting several projects for potential grant funding. So. Um, the district has identified a few projects that are going to be included in their plan. And they are going to be submitting some of these to the U S Bureau of Reclamation for potential funding. Um, some of the projects that are going to be included in the, in the first initial round are additional canal lining. And uh canal pipeline um additions. So those are what we're, we've identified. We have some other projects that are identified for future grant opportunities, but that's been uh quite an in-depth process that both myself. And Alexis have been attending. Um. Uh, met with Congressman Kylie's office to introduce uh the district and uh. President McDonald and Director Saunders was able to attend with me. This was a very informative meeting. We were able to uh thank them. For the appropriation award and also ask for a recommendation for myself to sit on. Uh, Drinking Water Committee as a rural member that can give recommendations to Congress. On potential funding and potential issues that our rural districts face. Uh, was able to attend and participate in the overview of special district laws. This is a portion of. A leadership certificate that I am attempting to uh obtain called the Essentials of Leadership from the C S D A. Uh. And I think that's about it. Uh, also I uh, as, as well as uh President McDonald and Director Saunders. I also attended the Aqua Conference. I am a member of several committees. Um, and was uh attended in attendance for all of those committees as well as um the Headwaters Working Group a- as well. And moving forward, I have one uh good news update. Um, our very own Jessica Buckle was invited to speak at. The L S L Gatsby Conference. Um, if you'll continue to scroll, there's some pictures of her there uh at the conference. Um if you'll continue to scroll, there's some pictures of her there uh at the conference. So very proud of her for that. Um she did a very great job and uh. So that's that's my my report. I'll. Go ahead.
Oh, we were just, we were gonna applaud.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, please. She deserves it.
That wasn't enough. She's not blushing enough yet.
I'll pause very briefly for any questions on this report, and then I will go into a verbal report on the voluntary agreements.
Any more from the board? Public comment, questions? You may proceed. Nicholas, you may proceed.
Sorry, I thought I apologize for that. I wasn't sure if you were talking to me or somebody in the public. Um so a quick update on the voluntary agreements um. We've been uh meeting as a what they're calling the American River Watershed uh uh group. It includes Plaster County Water Agency, Forest Hill P U D. And ourselves and uh E I D. These four members are required to um. Are going to be required to participate at at some level in the voluntary agreements or the V A's. Um basically what the voluntary agreements is, um this is a a set of standards and. The word voluntary is the meaning of we're gonna voluntarily give up some of our water in specific years, whether it. Um uh how much water has fallen, so that the years go, there is a what they call a critically. Dry year, that is the driest that we get. That would be uh like twenty fifteen or uh twenty twenty one when we. Uh had very little water in the system. There is a dry year, which is um. Next step from that, then there's below normal, above normal, and then what they'd call a wet year. So uh this year is consult considered a wet year. So in any uh dry, below normal and above normal year, we would be required as part of one of those American River. Uh partners to give up some of our water. Now, the thought is that we would be paid for the for giving up some of this water. The going rate currently is two hundred and ninety five dollars per acre foot. So the total um uh amount that is required from those four partners is ten thousand acre feet. And. By calculating the math so far, the district would be on the hook for about three thousand acre feet. The analysis is that. There if there was no refill requirement, as in a normal water transfer, the district could participate in this. Any year that it is required. However, the state is only requiring. Every. Three years of participation out of every eight years, so you would not be required to to give up this water every year. But as they were to call, as they they call it, called upon for the water. Then we would assess whether or not we would be able to fulfill that request for this year. So. Nobody knows what the future holds, but. It looks pretty good for the district to have additional revenue coming from this potential voluntary water transfer. Now, there is the the potential that we still would have a refill requirement, which I'm going to strongly advocate that we do not. But then we would have to have less um. We would have less ability to to do this every year, and we would have to um reassess our water situation. So this isn't something that we're agreeing to today, tomorrow, or or the next day. However, this is something that's going to be coming probably within the next six months. Um we are also looking to be partners with other agencies throughout the the region. That can buy our water from us and place it into groundwater banks. And increase storage throughout the region, so that the district can see a benefit, as well as the region can see a benefit. And we can potentially utilize our resource as an asset to the district. Um I'm gonna turn it over really quickly to Director Saunders, cause I know he has a small update on the regional water authorities um. V A agreement as well, and so I'd just like to have him, because he was in attendance at that meeting, give the update on that.
And just an overview, so this is the state, it's the Bay Delta Plan. And every uh river that goes into the Bay Delta has to uh put water in to uh. To help the delta, so um. The groundwater basin that we join with R W A, they're trying to make a Sacramento groundwater bank. And we would be part of that, and it would be a. Conjunctive use where there's groundwater wells and uh using reservoirs to, so when there's wet periods, we can use uh. Water go down to the groundwater and they can uh have extra storage and vice versa when it's dry years, uh groundwater can uh fulfill the requirement. The groundwater has the same kind of requirements to the delta, however. They do not get any uh. Ability to sell the water, so if they're on the hook for fifty acre feet, they would owe fifty or thirty acre feet with no reimbursement. What the Department of Water Resources, however, did will say they will give. Fifty-five million to invest in a groundwater program, so if they could put in. Any uh groundwater projects by, believe it's June first. That they will have the opportunity to be funded, so. At our next meeting at R W A, we're going to improve the list of projects to go in for that funding. And hopefully they will be funding, so we'll be part of the conjunctive use where uh. Reservoirs and groundwater storages are used together to help fill the uh Delta Plan and. For uh the combined years, it's critically dry and dry years, it's twenty acre feet that would be uh. Required from a conjunctive, and if it's just the groundwater itself, it's thirty acre feet. So and as they said, this was a little fluid, that was the last meeting, nothing is set in stone yet, and you're also dealing with U S Bureau of Reclamation. And then just to go over voluntary agreements versus not, the. Pros of the voluntary agreements are it's regulated, it's uh we get reimbursement back from it. If we can do things like getting rid of the water refill, you will be able to get revenue back to the district. The downside of if there are no voluntary agreements, then it would be uh fifty to sixty-five percent. Mandated pass through of our water down to the bay. So that's why it's in our benefit to work with the voluntary ingredients and get it so it's as favorable for us as possible.
And the mandatory, we don't get paid for.
Mandatory, you wouldn't get paid.
I got a question on the the Sacramento Water Bank. That's something we could put our Fazio water into.
So uh. Working on paper transfers on how to do it.
The short answer is no, the long answer is we're working on it. Um I have some ideas as to how we can utilize that phasio water as an agreement with E I D. The 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 hangup with the phasio water is it has to be taken from a federal facility. So if we were to say take um have allow. E I D to utilize their federal facility to take that water, then we could do a sort of trade for other water along the along the way.
Hmm, that was something that campaign said that that they were working out in that whole Sacramento Bank. And that that was gonna have something to do with the Fazio water.
Yes, and so that's, we're also working with Ken. Um E D W A and our and our uh our water transfer. Uh consultants have a pretty good insight. One of the persons who's writing our water transfer policy has uh. Written a portion of some of the legislation for that, and so they're pretty well versed as to how we can utilize it, so. It's going to be included in our uh documentation.
I have a question of Director Saunders. Uh pass through, can you define when and the pass through? How is that?
It would usually, they would try to set it between um. The beginning of spring and spring, and they would have uh, we would have to give so many uh cubic feet would have to run through the district.
Okay, so beginning of spring, after winter, before?
It would probably be be between after winter and before spring, because it's also a counter perfect too, so you might want it to be here by then.
And uh Nicholas, I have a question. Would the uh state request an answer from us or commitment prior to our own? Water assessment and prior to for us being able to take into consideration any decisions to sell our water?
So the the years that we have to sell. Okay, here, uh it's kind of a complicated answer, so. In a critically dry year, which is going to be where we can capture the most amount of money for our water, we are not required. To give up any water, so we could sell water. In a dry year, they are looking to provide more than the two hundred and ninety-five uh acre feet of water. Part of our argument as a coalition, and it's not just the American River Partners, it's others that are participating. Uh as part of the uh water suppliers for this, so it's a little different as. Director Saunders stated, all the rivers have to provide water. And everybody who has a water right has to give up a portion of their water right. So people in the South who are receivers of water don't get the water. Whereas we who are supplying the water have to give up more water. So the argument that we're putting together is when we could potentially sell to those agencies that have a need. We would like to have more in like a dry year than the three hundred do- than the two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and so they are contemplating. Giving us market value. First, they're saying over the three thousand acre feet or over our commitment, however. Because we could just say, no, we don't want to do it this year, they are also considering giving us market value, which we're saying market value is six hun-. Six hundred dollars per acre foot in dry years. In a below normal and above normal, it would just be a normal water. Uh agreement with the two hundred and ninety-five. Dollars. And I hope that's, I know it's super confusing, and I'm sorry to do that. I hope that answers your question.
Would the uh the sa- any sale uh include a refill?
So if we were to sell it, it's a refill. If we are to voluntarily agree to give up our water. Um I would say we are going, we are pushing with everything we have to not make it a refill.
But any any sales like we did previously, are they, are we always encumbered with that refill?
Yeah, that has to do with a Bureau of Reclamation requirement, because um. What they're saying is we are putting a deficit or a hole in uh the Folsom Lake Project.
Understood, thank you. Mister Dowd.
Now, he mentioned three hundred, that three thousand acre feet, uh at two hundred and ninety-five dollars an acre foot. That's close to a million dollars, right?
Eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Very good.
Yes, that's.
About the same rate.
There's a big button up there, but.
But if we get the six hundred per acre feet, that's one point eight million.
Wow. That's not bad.
And it sells sometimes for two thousand.
Yeah, just before this.
Yeah.
Later, last year.
Yeah.
Well, we. The most it sold for, the most it sold for in our area is a thousand dollars. So when you see prices in the two thousands, that's somebody who's buying it, who has to move it through various facilities. It it's it's typically in a dry year or a critically critically dry year, the going rate is about. Six to eight hundred dollars a squ- an acre foot.
At the headwaters.
And we go. Correct.
Yeah.
Bigger numbers. The the reason you have, you hear bigger numbers is because, for example, if San Diego wants to buy water from us. We would sell it to them for say eight hundred dollars an acre foot. They would have to make an agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. They'd have to make an agreement with the state water uh D W R, state water projects. They'd have to make an agreement with Metropolitan, and then to make an agreement with San Diego Water Authority, and every one of those. Entities that they have to make an agreement with is going to tack on their either energy charge, transmission charge. Or other, you know, pass-through charge, so that's where you end up getting two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars per acre foot.
And I recall that conversation we had last week at the conference that he was buying it for seventeen hundred. We could sell it for less than a thousand somewhere. By the time he pays all those incremental. He's might maybe closer to fourteen hundred, he might save two hundred dollars. But it's a savings. Yeah, thank you for for finding it.
Now, Mike, you've mentioned uh about the ground storage, you know, some portion of it going, is that in the form of tanks? Yeah, so that and that's what the uh investment one will before, it's called A S R Wells, so it's wells that are uh. Gonna be placed, there were several Rose Wells, Citrus Heights, so we're part of the Sacramento Regional Water Bank.
Underground or?
Underground.
Yeah, they're not tanks, it's just utilizing the aquifer, the natural.
What happens is it's kind of, it allows it to be pumped in, and some of them actually hold water, but most of it is to uh recharge the. Ground basin. The groundwater basin.
And how do they reach it? They just know where to get to, bro?
Yeah, so the way a groundwater bank works is you either let water infiltrate naturally. In a basin, or you inject water into the groundwater, and then to make it a groundwater bank. You have what they refer to as extraction wells, that then will extract the water that was put in there and can be moved through the system.
And what I learned at the, one of the things I learned at the conference was they flood the orchards and the fields. And in areas where they can, so you don't.
Yeah, foul.
What's it called?
It's called flood bar.
Yeah.
Flood managed aquifer recharge. So they will take any additional water that's in the system, so I E this year had a a great deal of of water. They are encouraging people to basically flood their orchards, flood their fields. Anywhere that they can basically breach a levee and allow that water to go as opposed to out to the ocean or out to other areas. They they can put it on the ground and it will uh recharge the aquifer naturally.
Thank you.
Next uh, next meeting, I could go put in the uh article that went into uh one of the water magazines from uh. Sacramento for the R W A, which goes over the water system and the banking. I'd like to make a motion, Mitch, to uh. Change the agenda because uh Mister Thomas has availability to move that item up so we do his thing we have.
Okay. That's good if you saw that. I agree that we should be able to do that, to take a motion on it, but he done with his.
Oh.
Report.
But we gotta get through.
Oh, that you stand up.
I'm making a motion that we move this ahead of the committees and to get this done and.
Um. Which I I second the motion.
Will that be closed? No, it's for finance committee. Oh.
So like right now. I well, I guess my question is, is is the general manager done with his report?
I I am done, thank you.
Okay. He was able to sense that somehow. Yeah, all right, I just want to make sure we were. Okay, let's get that one done.
Now you wanna move eight A in front of seven.
Yes, okay, uh we have a motion seconded by me. All in favor?
You can't second.
I'll second. Who can, cause he uh.
You've got a few more months and then in a few more months you'll be able to second thing.
Yeah, yeah. Dirk resolve a second, all in favor? Okay, we'll move the that ahead, and I think it's right now.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, he's right there and it's right now. Okay. See. This section, uh go ahead, uh I'm not sure.
How about I do a quick introduction?
Yeah, why don't you do that, Nicholas? Thank you.
Uh what we're here to do today is to interview uh a gentleman by the name of Michael Thomas. For an opening that we have on our finance committee. I think I would like to allow Mister Thomas to do a little opening statement. Uh we do have ten minutes reserved for this this interview, so that will include his opening statement plus. Questions and answers from the board and from the com- the com- the public. So at this time, Mister Thomas, would you please uh give a quick opening statement introduction and why you want to be on our committee?
Okay, great, thank you. Uh yes, I've been a G P U D customer for thirteen years now. And um I feel it's an important part of our community, and a few months ago I did see a flyer uh from G P U D. Uh asking for uh nominees to the finance committee. Uh in my practice, I represent a uh several mutual water companies, and I've represented nonprofit corporations for. For uh many years, and um so I I exhibited some interest uh with Nicholas uh. For the position. I do sit on various committees from uh for other nonprofit organizations. And uh I would just like to have a chance to contribute with my background to assist G P U D. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think uh President McDonald, if you'd like to go through the various. Thank you. I think President McDonald, if you'd like to go through the various board members and see if they have any questions of Mr. Thomas. And I believe his resume is included in the packet, so that would be uh for, for your guys' review.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Uh, I didn't see initially uh you, your desire and the reasons for it. Uh, so I was gonna ask you about that. Thank you for sharing that. In addition to your resume, thanks. Uh, any board member like to, Director Stovall?
Yeah, uh, can you tell me what region of the divide you live in or potentially?
I'm uh, I'm at A, in ALT at Third Gate. Near Third Gate, I have a sixteen acre parcel.
Do you utilize irrigation water?
Uh, no, I, I wish, uh, but it, the canal's a little bit too far away.
Okay, so, Mr. Johnson, Director Saunders?
Yeah, I asked this of all the lawyers that we have, so are you currently uh practicing now still?
Yes, I have a practice uh in uh Roseville. I've been practicing uh for thirty-two years now. And um my practice focuses mostly on real estate. Again, I, I do represent a mutual water company down in the Central Valley. But mostly I focus on real estate, construction, uh, complex commercial litigation, that sort of thing.
Yes, to check for conflict of interest, are you currently in any litigation with any of our, the local water agencies or the county?
No.
Can, can I ask you which mutual water company you represent?
Uh, Potato, uh Potato Slough, uh, water company.
Thank you.
Director, uh, Thorburn?
Uh, Michael, your name appeared familiar to me. Are you representing Lon Uso, the lawsuit against the county?
Oh, yes. Yes, uh, I do uh represent Lon Uso in a dispute with the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so that, that would be an action against the county?
Correct.
Okay.
So we do have, so is that potential conflict, right?
Uh, where's, what happened to Christina?
Uh, Christina is on um her phone in a car, so she's driving to another meeting, so she might be able to respond.
I think I hear her.
I'm here. Um, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we, yeah, we can hear you. I guess our question.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I heard that, that he's, he's representing Lon Uso uh in a litigation against the County Board of Supervi- Supervisors. Just that alone doesn't present a conflict uh for serving on a committee with the district. It, we, I would have to look at the, the merits of that lawsuit and what, what it's about um in order to assess whether there's any exposure to the district with regard to that action specifically.
Yeah, the lawsuit itself, or it's a petition for writ of mandate, it concerns a um uh denial of a uh conditional use permit uh for Mr. Uso's property adjacent to ALT. Um, he has several non-conforming structures for an open space. And although the staff had recommended that a conditional use permit be issued, the Board of Supervisors granted an appeal and denied the um conditional use permit.
If that uh conditional, yeah, maybe you can answer this, I'm not much sure, but i- if that commute, if that conditional use permit were to be ultimately granted pursuant to the suit, would the Georgetown Divide Utility District um have any involvement in processing uh any portions of the permit or approvals related to it?
No, it's uh, again, it's all concerning um several structures, uh noth- nothing to do with um water, water rights or water access.
Oh.
Would any of those facilities be living spaces or have water access, i.e. a second meter?
No.
Director Siemens?
So tho- so those structures were off the initial meter from a legal um for, from a legal structure at the time that these quote, other structures were then built. Um, but then would, were we, or would we have been approached uh to allow that water use uh to be extended to these other structures? Um, and then that put us partly in litigation because if we had done it. We had approved it and it was, uh, we, it's been found, I'm just throwing this out there because I don't know any better. That we throw, that if these structures are then illegal, then um somehow could we get thrown in this mix of, of above and beyond, you know, where?
I don't think he has service, I think he's well.
Is he? Well, that's why I'm asking, is he, is he, um, I guess, does he have GDPRUD water up there or not? Uh, and if he does, then is he using that water to support those other structures or any entities in that, on that property? Cause I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I, I honestly don't know if he has a G-Pud water. I'm assuming he does because his property is adjacent to uh ALT. Um, and the only structure that's at issue uh that might have uh water, G-Pud water is a barn uh that he uses for his horses. And uh if the petition is not successful, uh code enforcement is requiring that he remove all non-conforming structures, including the, the barn. And so I guess uh he wouldn't be using that water anymore.
Or severing those connections.
Well, I, I, I believe I, I read that part of, part of the things going on with the county with Lon Uso was that he's out of well, and didn't get a permit for that, but I remember him saying back at the time, when we were in drought, they could not, G-Pud could not add any more connections. And so he had to get a well because he wanted it done at that time.
Well, I think that's what we need to get cleared up before we move forward on this.
So just so everyone understands, uh, Mr. Thomas's representation of Lon Uso in relation to an action against the county alone, wouldn't conflict him out and uh foreseeable potential future actions of a client of his on separate issues uh would more likely conflict him out of representing Mr. Uso than it would to be serving on the committee if he was um appointed. But again, we, we can take a look at the petition if it gets sent to our office and assess the, the risk of conflict of interest and what that looks like.
Okay.
And I, I can, I can double check with Mr. Uso to confirm that he's on well and not on G-Pud.
The other question I have, how long do you expect this uh litigation to last?
Uh, probably until uh September, maybe October of this year.
And we wouldn't know whether, from the staff, we wouldn't know whether there is a treaty water custom? Um, Jessica?
I don't know the parcel that you guys are referring to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I uh, there's no, I just haven't, so uh, and the property you have here is in a rental, uh, you live in ALT, so it's probably not. So you live here, not in Roseville. I thought there might have been some reference to a Roseville residence, but.
Uh, that's my, my office is in Roseville, my residence is there at Third Gate in ALT.
Thank you.
Okay, now make.
So, what, what I, what I can do is uh double check um uh whether Mr. Uso is on well, and I can let Nicholas know.
Sure.
I was gonna make a motion that we put this on pause until we get more information to make a, uh, an informed decision. I mean, there's a second.
Mr. Thomas, are you available on June eleventh, I believe it is? To come back to, we can, we can do you right in the beginning, if you wouldn't mind?
Thirteen.
June thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Uh, June thirteenth, yes, it's available.
If you would mind, and if, if the motion goes through, then we could uh do some research and we can come back and I think it'd be amenable to the board that we could put this matter forward in the agenda. And we could take a vote at that time.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do I get a second to that motion by Director Siemens?
Nick can't make these decisions, you, we have to make these decisions.
The other thing I want to do is if we wanted to wait until the litigation was done, so then there would be no issues to worry about as well, that's possible.
Did he give us a timeline like?
Partly September. That would be our decision if we wanted it next meeting or if we want to push it till September.
Any problem as well, cause I mean, he has a good background, then I know we want to fill the finance committee, but we also don't want to, you know, have any issue dealing with our supervisors for, you know, any of that we're going for. Once that litigation's down, it wouldn't be any kind of.
Hey, wanna speak up a little bit?
Once, once, uh, once the litigation done, it does remove any kind of awkward deals where we have a committee member that may be actively in litigation with the Board of Supervisors.
Is the only conflict being what you brought up with the, this current customer of treated water well? Is that the only one that we know of?
Well, no, that's, there's just a current litigation with the Board of Supervisors.
Just, just.
Just to avoid any, you know.
So should I amend mine if I?
Would you like to make an amendment?
Uh, okay, I, I make the motion that we um push this off until the end of the litigation. So we have him free and clear of any, any possible conflict that uh Eldorado County and us, you know, because we are a close, that is a close uh uh party that we have. So that's my motion, we push it off till the end of his litigation, he can come back and we will be more than happy to entertain his.
Yes, regardless of Mr. Russo's water use status.
That become, that's not our problem.
Yeah, regardless.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause I would hate to um ask him not making on the finance.
That would be second.
Hmm, okay. Um, do I get a second?
Second.
I just wanna make a comment, is he aware that he needs to be here in person if he is on the finance committee with exceptions? Doug, I don't think is maybe pulled.
Because that's a Brown Act committee.
Right.
Mr. Thomas, did you hear the question?
Yes, and, and, and again, I, I live just down the road from where you guys are, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Typically, it's three thirty, yeah. Last Thursday in a month. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes that we postpone this uh meeting till after litigation, the county is behind us. Uh, presumably September. Yes, Nicholas?
Oh, is this, Mr. Thomas, if you'd just like to stay in contact with myself? And we can um include you in the agenda as soon as your litigation has concluded, we would be happy to put you on the very next um board agenda.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
And thank you very much, yes.
Okay, irrigation committee.
Let's keep going here, back on track. Uh, Mr. Chairman Miller? Irrigation, irrigation first. There we go, irrigation committee, go ahead.
Well, Ray Griffin isn't here. Um, we didn't, the meeting got postponed that we were supposed to have this month. Um, which I was curious if we had a quorum, if, if that was the issue. Uh, because that should be about the only reason we don't have a irrigation committee meeting. Um but we got through most of the um ordinance, uh, it's on, I believe, the last cut. Are you remembering this too?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking though, there, there isn't any requirement that its members staff be at the meetings.
Right, what I'm saying is the quorum for the uh volunteers that are coming in for irrigation committee, that's the only trigger that would actually cancel our meeting. Yes, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, we could have still had a meeting.
Right.
If we had a quorum. And I think that, that would probably would have been the thing to do is, I mean, we got a quorum, hold the meeting. That's, that's my, my take on it.
That's kind of in the future, we want to stress that, that the calls go out if there's an issue um with staff. Um, that we make sure we have a quorum available, if the quorum isn't available and that's a whole different ballgame that we need to cancel the meeting.
We will definitely work on that, and we're also, just to be aware, we're working on um several of our members participate remotely, so that is one of the issues as well, is to make sure that they're all aware that if they do participate remotely, we have to post their locations now due to the Brown Act requirement. So um we have been working with a couple of the committee members to ensure that they're aware of that situation.
I have a question in that regard, Nick. Um, if, I know, I know all the rules for the, the Brown Act and, and participating remotely, you only get two things. Why couldn't they say we had a quorum in person, which is required? And couldn't, couldn't a, a committee member attend remotely but not as a committee member? And, and not vote, they wouldn't be able to vote.
You, you are one hundred percent correct, that they can, they can, they would just be a regular member of the public at that time.
Okay, and there's no penalty, no Brown Act violation or anything like that?
They would not be able to vote or deliberate on any of the items.
Right, as, as a committee member, they could, they could discuss it when they have the public input.
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks. And so the next meeting of, on the June fifteenth?
Yes.
Is it, what, at three thirty?
It's two o'clock.
Two.
It's at two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Anything else?
And I think uh the last thing I remember we discussed, since I'm like flying on this, cause Ray should be, her notes. Um, is that um the, for, the district is supposed to be coming up with some um information to go out on different topics, on educating giving people more information for the, the committee or for the uh, uh, Detroit.
Yeah, we're working on some flyering, we're also working on selling more water.
Yes.
Those areas that uh, that are underutilized. And we're working on potential how-to educational videos that will help irrigation customers to understand their system better.
Yeah, because that was.
Just to put in a, remember, that still hasn't come before the board committees, they don't have that.
Right, but it's, uh, one of the things that came up was that um, you know, we had multiple inches left on each certain lines and uh we don't have any information going out saying, hey, we got four inches left on the Cherry Acres line, uh, anybody wanna get more water? Uh, to try to sell the rest of that water. Um, and that's what we're gonna have to start trying to figure out how to push this water out.
And figure out how to get that.
Money, yes. So that was the other thing that came up during our whole stuff.
That's the first time I've ever heard flyering used.
Flyering?
Yeah. Nick said.
I'm gonna making up words.
Isn't that when they dump them from an airplane?
Yeah, I guess.
So I'm done.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chairman Miller with Finance Committee report, please.
Yep, the finance committee that last month, and we went through the proposed budget at a pretty thorough basis. And for me personally, and I shared it with the committee at the time, I would share it with you as a possible, you know, avenue to take a look at where we're, where we're going next year is to not look at this year, but to look at the previous year. Because this year has been a tremendous anomaly with the repairs that we've had to go through, and all the rumbles that we've had, and all the damage that we've suffered. And so if you really go through that budget and say, okay, what happened a year ago? Versus where we are now with a reasonable approach to an additional inflationary issue for every particular item. Uh, actually, we, we were pretty clean on it, there was, I think, maybe four issues that were brought up that that the, the general manager was going to be revising and looking at anyway, so I would say. So I'd say that from our standpoint, looking at the budget as it's proposed. Was pretty much in, in reason with the previous year to this year. And there's some real bubbles in this year that were basically taken away going forward.
Go ahead.
Are you gonna, is it gonna be a kind of an official uh, recommendation or presentation to the board when we get to that part in the agenda? As far as if we have a final, if we have a final report for next meeting.
Then yeah, we can make a recommendation to finance committee that we accept it all or accept it all except for.
Oh, so you don't, you don't have that at this, you don't have that at this time?
Well, there were a couple of issues that that's what we have.
If I can jump in.
Okay.
So we're, we're going where we need to go, we're spending what we need to spend, and we're asking pertinent questions, not unlike the one that I asked earlier about. Yes, you know, we have a state of mind, you know, for item, but in this current world, maybe we need to extend that life. It didn't look like the, the facility is still, you know.
Right, well, look, my, my question is that it, it's more of a time concern. Because we have about a next meeting, we kinda need to have a budget approved, uh, cause we're gonna, it starts July first. So that I was just trying to get a feel for what the timeline for all this is gonna happen, and Nick, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I would like to talk to that timeline, uh. So at the next uh, finance committee meeting, we're gonna invite uh, all the board members as well. So that we can do a joint presentation of the budget. And we can continue with any comments that come out of today's presentation of the budget. And at that meeting, we will have um, kind of a working meeting where we can look at some of the numbers, adjust some of the numbers. And then hopefully from that meeting, we can get a recommendation from the finance committee to present this to the board as a final budget. That will be finalized on June thirteenth, my goal. I'm so sorry.
So you're talking basically like a budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
Hey, when, and when do you plan on having that?
That'll be at the next finance committee meeting, so I believe it's the thirtieth, I'm, I'm not having a calendar in front of me.
Yeah.
It'll be the twenty-fifth, excuse me, the twenty.
Is that an early day or not, so we can after?
Oh, June.
Both Thursday, of May.
Of May.
Not, not for the May meeting, but we'll have to have.
The May meeting with the, where, when's the next meeting?
It's the, it's usually the fourth, Thursday of the month, so whatever that is.
So May.
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth, that's when this is gonna be?
That's our next meeting.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll have to do a calendar to see when the whole.
What's going on on the twenty-fifth?
And if the board is not able to participate in person, they'd be able to participate in that meeting by Zoom. Because it would be um, they, they would be able to give their input, but also. Uh, it wouldn't be their committee, they'd be participating as sort of a member of the public, but also as a, as a board member, you know.
Yeah, let's do a calendar because I'm not available that day to be on Zoom like.
When is the twenty-fifth?
Finance committee to change their meeting to meet your.
And we have to, you didn't schedule a budget workshop yet, I was gonna propose to do a budget workshop.
Oh, instead of having it at their scheduled meeting times?
We can, we can send out some dates that might work if that would be helpful.
That would be better.
That might, that might, that might be a better idea, what do you think, Steve?
Whatever you guys wanna work.
I mean, but if we have the budget workshop after you guys have your next meeting, that'll give you some time to gather some more input, you think?
If, you know, if you have the next meeting and as general manager, you get, you guys wanna come in as, as participants. Not board members, but as participants from the public.
Well, well, what we're.
That's, that's fine, and then if you want a final report, if you want a workshop meeting, whatever you guys want.
No, my question, my question is, they're talking about doing, the original are talking about doing it on your scheduled meeting date. But Dr. Saunders isn't gonna be available, so we're talking about having a separate budget workshop.
Why, why don't we, why don't we have Liz work with the, with US board members and the committee members? To look at the week of the twenty-ninth and the week of the fifth. For a potential day that would work for everyone, or at least a majority of people. And we can schedule a budget workshop, workshop where we can sit down for an hour to two hours and just go over budget. So I can have Liz, after this meeting today, send out um, some dates and some times, that might work. And we can um, we could do like a, a, a poll to see what would be the best date for everybody.
Okay.
Um.
And I think that, that's actually covered where I am is that whatever you guys need, we'll do.
Yeah, and that alternate date doesn't need to be on a Thursday, cause the following one we might be on a tour, so, okay.
You're gonna be on a tour?
Yeah. You're, go, go ahead.
So I don't know if this is the right place to ask you, when you look at numbers, do you question um, like? I compare like. Um. Well, I was just asking, the finance committee, since he may be actually working on the budget again. Before we actually start talking about the budget, I don't know.
We'll talk about the budget, hopefully sometime today.
Yes.
Are you gonna be here when we start hacking the budget up a little bit?
He always is.
Not necessarily, like. Well, yeah.
Always invited.
Okay, never mind, I'll wait. Well, my, my question is, when you're saying things are going, you know, numbers are, I see numbers that are the, are just. To me, I feel are placeholders that they, don't take this wrong, they, they're throwing numbers in there just to have these numbers put in. Uh, to have, what are you looking at?
You, it's throwing everything on the board and see what sticks, that's what.
Well, yeah, cause I, I see.
All available optional. Yeah, let's, okay.
Andrew, I just have a question on the meeting date, since the agenda says June twenty-second.
But.
Um, you're doing that. I mean, maybe that's the June. Eight, not the May eight. So that's not even a correct date. Hmm, okay, so. Yeah, okay, so it's like, how are we gonna know the public if you guys get all, you decide and then can we know a little bit ahead of time instead of the day before?
We'll have to notice any kind of special meeting that all the board members are at. It will actually be a board meeting, so it will have to be noticed to the public.
Correct, but like twenty-four hours ahead.
So you want the budget to be approved on the thirteenth?
Yes.
June.
Yes.
But this next meeting date says June twenty-second, it's not May.
Yeah, it should, it should be May twenty-fifth.
May twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the June meeting is on the thirtieth of, I'm sorry, the last Thursday of every month.
The whole line is wrong.
It's the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth of May.
Alright, okay.
So that was your comment about the wrong date, okay, right. That was the comment I was gonna make, Director Seaman about what you just said about placeholder, fill it in. What, any available expense, and then we'll hash it out.
We can go over the budget, uh, we'll explain our, our methodology.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, just so you're aware, in the last meeting, I compared the actual expenditures to the proposed. Budget from the year before this one. So I, I did look at the proposed expenditure from a year before, I looked at the actual expenditure to do for, see what. They're budgeting going forward, deep frogging this very year.
Got it.
And, and if I didn't.
And then I take it to the other level.
This, this way it kinda did this, or even if it did this, I asked about it, I always ask about it, that's, that's my note.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, next item, C, Ad Hoc Committee for Policy Manual, Director Saunders and or Seaman.
See, I can.
Are you uh, looking up something?
Basically, so basically, uh, we have uh, one policy. We passed on the uh. With the consent calendar, we have the policy for code of conduct for meetings, so that's gonna be um, agenda for this item. And then we are going through the uh, policies for on, the H L policy is on hold for that, we still have to get through that, the. Anti-harassment and discrimination is now being, gonna be reviewed by Aqua J P I A to follow up on. All of this stuff and then send it back to us, and uh, the next one's gonna be going over the. Reimbursements and remuneration, and that's the next policy for.
And we're also gonna be doing, uh, I have a draft of the water transfer policy, but I asked and requested for some changes. To that before we submitted it to the policy committee, so that will be on the next meeting as well.
And the sequel policy.
Yes.
But those will be in two weeks, not the eighteenth.
Yeah, so we are, we're canceling the May eighteenth meeting because we don't have uh, the staff support and we don't have. Our, our staff member is, is gonna be out that day, that is, is basically chairing that committee, so.
And we're just getting notified today?
Um, we should have been notified today, I think we were.
An email too, I saw an email.
Yeah, there's, there, we've been, we've been emailing.
Are we done?
That's.
Well, I guess my Thursday morning player.
What's it reimbursement and what?
Uh, the reimbursement, renumeration policy for board members, that's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and how we get reimbursed and all of that.
Okay, moving on to the Ad Hoc Grant Writing Committee, Director Saunders and or Stovall.
We haven't met since the last one, so I'm not gonna leave the report. Um, yeah, based on.
Wow.
Okay, Ad Hoc Committee for Audit Committee, uh, Director Saunders and or Thornbor.
Yeah, before, and how is the, what's the update on the audit?
Um, no complaints. And they've had uh, several questions that were easily answered by L S L, they don't speak to me unless it's something L S L can't answer. And since they were our auditors for five years, it's very easy for them to just answer these quick questions they have.
No big red flags?
No findings yet.
No findings yet? Okay, I like the uh.
No, we're gonna go with no findings, not yet.
Well, this microphone's pretty sensitive. Yeah, I can remember that.
You got Ad Hoc Labor Negotiations Committee, uh, no meetings scheduled, uh, Director Thornbor, my liaisons.
I'll give a quick update, this is still on hold due to the salary survey being uh. In, in play, we've been working on uh, some of the, we've gotten some of the numbers back, but we are. Uh, changing the way certain things are going to be written up, so we're trying to ensure that that survey is. Uh, telling the right story before we begin any labor negotiations.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, section eight, tab four, item B, because we did the interview. Uh, this would be the budget review and potential approval with Nicholas.
Liz, can I have permission to share my screen so that I can put the presentation up at my end?
There you go. Oh, no, that was.
You're sitting in the audience. Oh, yeah, I can see that.
Oh, boy, I can't see that at all. We should be in the same, that looks better, that's more better.
A little pixelated, but.
Can you guys see the screen?
Yes, it's not the slide sharing, it didn't see the screen.
What do you see?
We see the slide. We see the cover sheet.
You need to make it as big as possible.
Yeah, it's as big as I can make it. Okay, so um.
In the back.
What's the same, the same here is.
Alright.
Alright, you have more residue on the, on the binder. Okay, let's go and roll.
Okay, so I, before I get started, I would just like to give a great deal of kudos to Jessica and Liz. For putting both this presentation together, but also for their work on the budget, um. As the last finance committee and the last uh, board, a presentation of this budget. We've tightened a lot of loose screws, we've changed a lot of numbers. We are much more close to where I think we will be and much more close to where we were. Last year, there is still um, a bit of gap, and I think we can go over where those gaps lie and why some of those lie. And then taking into account some of the comments from Mr. Miller, yeah, we do realize that there are some areas where. We have looked at last year's finances and, and brought them into this year, but there is an explanation. As to why, so um, I do believe I have all my, my department managers either in the building or in the room. So that we can um, answer any questions that they, they may be able to answer, so. First, let's go into uh, source of supply. Um, one of the things that I'd like to just note is if you look at this, these two columns over here. We do have the change in the budget from last year, so the first column. Is the change in what we, we, we budgeted for, and then this number here is a change in what we project moving forward. The, the top section of all of the spreadsheets are all regarding employees. And or benefits, so many of these things we really can't change a lot of. Unfortunately, um, due to either the M O U or the set of um. Uh, things that we deal with from uh, insurance, health insurance, workers' compensation. And then CalPERS for retirement expenses and unfunded liabilities, a lot of these numbers are given to us. And so we can only calculate what we have, so that top section, there's not a lot of wiggling that we can be, that can be done. But you can also notice how these wages are causing our budget to, to increase. You know, in the, you know, fourteen percent of what we budgeted last year, and then up to twenty percent of what we're projecting to go out at the end of this year. Now, where things can be um, addressed and changed is down here in the, the lower section. And so this is the non-labor expenses that we have, and many of these have uh, um. An area where we can make changes, and then we have a whole nother spreadsheet that will go over where and why we're spending that money. So uh, I would like to just point this out for uh, Mr. Miller's edification and for the rest of the board. Um, to, of note, in materials and supplies, we budgeted for eleven thousand dollars. We spent almost fifty thousand dollars and we're projecting to spend about sixty-five thousand dollars just from that one category. Now, we realize that that is mosquito relied, mosquito related expenses. And we were reimbursed for a portion of that, that money, but when we came in to budget, we wanted to make sure that we, we had enough money to. Uh, fund those specific projects that we are going to still be working on, so. Um, Adam had been mentioning some of the silting, some of the other projects that we're working on. So we wanted to ensure that there is, there's additional funding that is available. When we look at materials and other, this is what we refer to as uh, a rental or a non-durable good. So something that is, you know, uh, uh, short-lived that we have, that's not, that's not there very often, so um. Um, we had to rent a great deal of equipment. To complete much of the work from the mosquito fire incident, and we're still having to rent some of that equipment to do the work. Based upon uh, what is, what we're experiencing now, so some of this. That we are anticipating could be utilized as part of a grant that we have forward. So we're hoping that not all of these. Uh, line items are fully paid for out of our general funding. I can't guarantee a grant is coming, but we can hope that grants are coming. We have. Of course, please.
On the red, you have red.
I will get to that. If you don't mind, I will get, let me, let me get down there, the it's, those are proposed categories that we didn't have in last year's budget. That answer your question?
Well, you have numbers in the column that you have for a budget, so that means um.
He's getting to that, he's not, he's going down the line.
Oh, it's, okay. Go ahead.
Something uh, and again, that I would like to point out, moving down a few lines is the government regulation fees. Um, and that increases from approximately eighty thousand dollars per year to almost a hundred and twenty thousand. This is for our annual dam inspection fees and other fees that we have that are uh, inspecting the source of our water. So Stumpy and Walton and um Greenwood Reservoir. Uh, yes, and moving down into where it is red, there is. A couple of categories that we did not utilize in the past, so we are proposing additional categories, so. What you'll notice is, yes, there are numbers in the budget for this year, but nothing for any previous years, and so that's. Where um, we're coming from here, so capital expenses, these are um. Typically looked at as something that is a long-term. Um, uh, purchase, so. I can go to the next line and I'll show you, but this is the equipment. And or um, something that is going to be utilized for many years into the future. Um, and then a category that we haven't had in the past is a P P E and safety equipment. And this is something where we are including um, all the employees' uniforms as well. So going to the next page, you can see where we started to break down and why we have the numbers so that they all add up. For you, and I'd just like to go over to that capital expenses. Um, on the far left, excuse me, far right, um, third box down. Uh, we have um, we are looking to purchase some new trimmers, some new pole saws. And a drone so that we can inspect the canals. And get into areas that is more difficult for people to get into and ensure that. Um, everything on the canal is operational, but we also see that this drone could be utilized. In case of anybody who may have been da, who had, may have done damage to the canals. Or maybe taking water unlawfully from the canals, so the drone will serve many purposes moving forward, that'll be a one-time purchase. And um, we will have people get trained to be, to operate that uh, that drone. Uh, moving back up to the government regulation fees, you'll notice that the dam permit fees. Were um, eighty eight thousand dollars, so in the previous budget, the dam permit fees were approximately eighty thousand dollars. They have increased a bit, and we also have fees related to our water rights that we have to submit. And so that was not budgeted for, and that amounts to approximately thirty thousand dollars in additional spending. I'd just like to take a minute right now, while you're looking at this, if you have any questions about. Any of the categories here or or how we have developed. These uh, these numbers, I'd like to to maybe just take a minute here to see if anybody has any suggestions. Or questions as to where these numbers came from.
Director Saunders?
I just wanna, the drone also includes the training for it as well.
Yes, if you'll notice under staff development, it has F A, F F A training, which should have say F A A training.
Equally is important, though.
The trainings, uh, book training, it's not hands-on.
It is, it, there, there is, uh, there is a. Yes, there is a book train, basically they're, they're licensed as pilots, so to speak. Of a drone, it's of a non-manned unmanned vehicle, I don't exactly remember what the, what the cert, what the license is, but. It is more or less a lot akin to a pilot's license.
Nicholas, under personal P P E, uh, that uniforms, uh. Do they take their uniforms home and wash them, or is there cleaning service?
Cleaning service.
Is that included in that?
We have a cleaning service that does that for them.
That's included in that cost, that's not somewhere else?
That is included in that cost.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dirk, assume.
Um, under the professional service, the, under the SECA, the five thousand dollars for E four. Um.
Yes.
That you have, I didn't see it in any of the other one, oh yeah, you do, but it's a blanket five thousand dollars. In the other ones too, um. Is that just kind of a number you've thrown in there to, in case you need it?
Correct. So when we do major projects like the canal lining or. The pipeline or any other kind of major construction projects, we will have that number rolled into the ca, the. Capital uh, funding for those projects. This is if we have some sort of an issue that is, that is less than a capital improvement project. Or if we have something that comes up as an emergency basis, we we need to have. Uh, some money to be able to pull from, and so that's where the five thousand dollars comes in.
Um, I don't know whether I should ask this question about the lab fees, uh, we had talked about a few months ago. Uh, sending these out to bid, see if we can get a better rate.
We, we could definitely do that, um, I would say most labs are consistent, but we are, it's never hurts to ask more than once.
Yeah, cuz you're over ten thousand dollars in lab fees, eleven thousand dollars in lab fee, but I'm saying, well, I'd say more than that. Um. But. Yeah.
President McDowell, I'd like to open it up to the public as well, so after the board members have all of their questions answered. I'd like to just include anybody from the public who might wanna ask any questions here as well.
Doesn't look like it, so now it does, and so.
So we're thirty-five percent increase in salaries. For Jeffrey.
That is correct.
That's the only public comment, we may move on, Nico, Nichols.
Okay, thank you, so moving into raw water or fifty-two hundred, this is, this is going to be related to our irrigation. Uh, water, now. Source of supply and raw water sort of crossover, so when we have these uh, budgeted amounts. It's, they're, they're a bit fluid when it comes to those two categories. Um, then, again, the tops, the, the top line. Um, we're actually budgeting less for salaries here. We have a little bit more for overtime. The, I would just like a caveat for the overtime expenses, we don't expect to utilize. The full allotment of the overtime that is, that is proposed. However, if we don't have it and we need it, then we have a much bigger problem moving forward, because then we have to start adjusting. So, um, I ha, at the end of this presentation, I will sho, they will show you. How we came up with the overtime numbers and how we ensured that those overtime numbers are correct. Something else I'd, I'd like to notice is the standby pay. So um, you'll notice that it's a eight thousand dollar increase in standby pay from last year to this year. This is because at times, we have additional members of our team that are on standby. So there are certain times of the year, we we have more than one uh. Operator who is standing by, and so I don't believe that this has been accounted for in the past. And it's something that we need to account for into the future. You'll notice as we go down, this is one of the categories where the salaries actually don't increase. Where we have a bit less than uh. Than last year budgeted for. Now, moving into materials and supplies, I'd again, like to just look at and uh, in caveat. Uh, some of the different situations that we have, and uh, Mr. Miller, I believe you're still in the room, so. You'll notice how we didn't just take the numbers that we projected moving forward at the end of this year. But we did actually make a calculation as to how much we are going to be using. So now that we're in this, this bottom section, I'm gonna go into the next slide of the presentation, so we can talk a little bit about some of the. Uh, detail, um, I would just like to point out that that materials and supplies. Which was actually budgeted for higher last year, we have uh. Uh, delineated out all the different pieces that we anticipate using throughout the year. And we are estimating that that's coming in approximately fifteen thousand dollars, where last year it was closer to twenty thousand dollars. So again, I would just like to open this up, so you guys can look at this, look at all these different categories. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to a- answer them. Um, from the, obviously from the board first, and then um, as we continue on from the public.
Nicholas, um, for the public's benefit and our benefit from the board, um. They, the public was concerned whether. Uh, we, in the past, at last meeting, they were talking about holding off their questions or comments. Until after you're finished, was that just during your, your board report, or was that during? The, from the board, um, discussing the budget.
I'd like to just make sure that we are including um, them in this, because we are getting down to the wire. And I wanna have as many opportunities to hear from as many people as possible. I think the last meeting, I wanted to uh, run through the budget as quickly as possible, so that I could get it laid on the table for everyone to see. And now that we've made quite a bit of adjustments based on the comments that were made at the last meeting, I wanna make sure that we capture those comments as we move along.
And we, okay, so in this, we have a question from Director Thornborough.
Yes.
It, it's. More a statement than a question, um. The operating budget for the district is supposed to be just that, just operating, what it costs. To operate the district, not improve things, add things as far as equipment and that sort of stuff. Um, I brought this up. Some time ago, before you were here and and our, our actual accountant at the time agreed with me, that's all it should be in the operating budget. Is just what it costs to operate. You got.
Okay.
salaries, your benefits, your fuel for the vehicle, all that sort of stuff. No anticipated purchasing of anything. Uh, as far as like equipment or 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 even tools and stuff, I mean, it's just. What it costs to operate, period, you know, no other. Um, additions.
So, these are not necessarily new additions, these are replacing. Um, um, equipment that is. Met its life expectancy, and we need to replace them, and we're only including small equipment, I understand. Where you're referring to as in say a capital expense for the capital improvement plan. And I've included the much larger purchases under that capital improvement plan budget. These are more um, small purchases that need to be made to ensure that we have operating equipment, you'll notice. Um, the whole, you know. Capital improvement budget, excuse me, capital expenses is typically less than five thousand dollars for most departments. And so that's just to make sure that we are maintaining and having the the same equipment that we've always had.
Okay, Director Seaman?
Um, I guess I'm sort of going with uh, with. Director Thumber, like, I see, you know, we had. Uh, uniforms of three thousand dollars and the uniforms of twenty-five hundred dollars, it's kinda. In, in the main budget, you know, what is the real number at the end of the day and then break it out after that? Um, so are you saying that? And I'm just asking, cuz I don't know any better, that uniform. Um, uniform budget costs uh, right now, going through two, to fifty-one hundred and fifty-two hundred. We're at what, uh? Five thousand, five hundred dollars.
I believe the full number for the year is ninety-five hundred dollars for all the uniforms, but Adam, if you're in the room, if you can correct me.
I'm just trying to figure out what.
Yeah, so, those numbers are developed, the amount of the crew members within that department, so we would just. So it's broken out by departments, we don't sum it up, but you just add all of them, that would be the whole uniform. Between each department, it's just, yeah.
Because I'm looking at like, you know, your professional services, you've got growler for twenty-five hundred dollars for each. You did last two sections. Um.
Yeah, so they would just fall, and so say if we had worth within the fifty-two hundred, we anticipate that much work regardless of there. If we have twenty-five hundred dollars for fifty-one, so it's just kinda separated out. You know, between the, between the departments.
And you can look on the vendor purchasing report for Airmark. Who's our uniform provider.
Yeah.
And see how much we paid them so far this year.
Cuz I was just wondering why these numbers were kinda.
Yeah, but didn't you get?
Yeah, and and I will, um. I will note that we changed out our uniform company to a different company. That offers a greater deal of services and offers um, a different. Uh, different uniforms, so they're, they're a much more visible uniform for our guys when they're out in the field. So we did, we did um, cha, make a change there, so that's. We have the actual um, proposal for the year, so we were able to take all the people in all these different departments and break these numbers down. To uh, be very succinct with everything.
Okay, thank you.
Director Saunders?
Um, I, I noticed that the. The information provided to the finance committee had a significant difference in the. Wages and benefits for raw water as opposed to what was presented to us today, what's? The rationale.
So when we did the salaries, we had some i- if issues with our salary. Uh, spreadsheet, so we went back through, as one of the comments that we received from finance committee was to make sure that we were. Um. Having the correct information in those different salaries, so what you see today is. Um, based upon our uh, colas for the various employees. And those employees that are still eligible for a step increase. Unfortunately, when we did the math the first time, we included everybody getting a step increase and a cola. And that's just not the case of of, for our employees, so we made sure to go back in and correct that data.
Thank you for that clarification.
Director Saunders?
I know it's materials and supplies and fuel, we went down from uh. The projected, but I just wanted to be sure, we're less than the actual year-to-date. And I know we have a mosquito fire, but fuel cost and material cost have all gone up by a significant percent, so. I just wanna make sure we're capturing that.
Oh, no, I, I absolutely agree with you, um, the fuel cost, um. If you, if you remember, as from last year to this year, um, fuel costs have gone up approximately forty-five percent. In cost of fuel, so that's where much of that fuel cost is coming from. So we're just anticipating some of the inflationary spending is going to catch up to our, to some of us. On, on, in some of the categories.
And then with a, I know we have Bennett Engineering on a professional service with each one.
Yes.
Also pay them out of our C I P project budget.
So if a project is a C I P related project, then all those costs get billed to the C I P project. So for example, if we start a project in raw water and we are working on. Say um, improving the canals by uh, aligning them. Once we have the funding, or once we go and that project becomes a capital improvement plan project, then that money would be transferred over to there. And it would be paid out of that budget instead of the individual operating budgets.
Question.
Given, given that, if it comes out of a C I P program that is grant-funded, then. That. At least potentially a percentage of that cost could disappear, correct?
Um, 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 yeah, the perfect, the, the di, the district engineer, these costs are very low. Because what typically we're doing here is if we have um, a small uh. Line break or a small um, road slide, they will come in and ensure that we are correcting the road correct, properly. Um, for example, during the mosquito fire incident, we had a. Um for example, during the mosquito fire incident, we had a few erosion issues that they had to come in and design. Um various materials to ensure that we're doing it correctly and safely.
I see, thanks for that clarification again. Chairman Miller.
I I just wanted to make a comment about the gene that I've done throughout my life and. A lot of it was on the professional side, and a budget is what you anticipate with reasonable expectation, this is what you're going to spend. It's not necessarily something that's laid down in a in iron because. If I've got a piece of a weapon that I'm pretty sure isn't going to make it through the year, I'm going to have to do one. Want to be prepared. So it's it's not simply, well, we spent X last year, so we're going to spend X three percent this year. It's it's beyond that, it's more of the anticipation, so things that. Happen that that, you know, that you try and plan for, so that at the end of the year you have spent. What you anticipated, not that you have spent what you anticipated on the regulars, but. Rest of it was not in the budget, so that's just my stand on budgeting. And most of which are going through now and the questions either asking now. Are exactly the same things that we asked.
Or or it might be um um. If you don't spend it this year, you're going to get less next year because you didn't need it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't typically budget that way. And and for the capital expenses, these are all um uh equipment pieces that we've identified that that potentially. Are are meeting their life expectancy or are at their end. Now, do we, are we going to spend every dollar from the capital expenses? I don't, I don't anticipate that we do. But we want to make sure that we're, as as was stated by Chairman Miller, we're we're trying to anticipate a little bit. For for how we are going to operate the system and how we're going to spend a little bit of this money.
Reed, you have a question? Go ahead.
On materials, this is probably for Jessica. Materials and supplies, operating fuel and utilities, the projected is way higher than the budget. It almost looks like they need to be switched.
Well, if you're taking into consideration that administration have their own vehicle, vehicle number one, and there was no budget. But allocated towards gas or maintenance for that vehicle for this year, so I think that. What Steve Miller was saying was that we have to look back a couple of years, I don't think that. Everything was addressed for this fiscal year budget.
Okay, but that's not what I, okay, if you look at through the end of uh March.
Yeah, I think Nick Nick touched on it, it was just um that the increased elevated gas prices we saw last year.
Okay, just materials and supply says twenty thousand so far.
Yeah, that's the same thing that I said.
Right.
The projection is much higher than.
Why wouldn't it be closer to the say the previous budget's twenty five?
And then we're just crossing our fingers, we don't have another wildfire.
Because we.
Okay, that doesn't make sense. And then on utilities, of those three categories, just the projection is. Three times more than the other, so I know, all right, so we're.
So if I can, if I can just jump in really quick. If we look back at last year's, the the approved budget for last year. We're we're decreasing materials and supplies. We're flat on materials other. We're decreasing in vehicle maintenance. We are increasing about three thousand dollars in fuel. We're increasing the professional services about nine thousand. And we are increasing the utilities about two thousand. So if we look at all of those numbers, we're actually coming in less for this department than we were budgeted for last year. That includes even adding in. The, you know, the capital expenses are where we start to get into adding in more than we had last year. So. The P P E and the capital expense is not something that we budgeted for out of this category before. So it's something where we have this extra category, and but we're still coming in relatively close to on budget.
Okay, but I still have a question, that twenty two thousand dollars in fuel through the end of March. And they add another twenty two thousand in the next three months. Or April, May and June, that's what I know.
I would say, I would say that that's, there there's, there's probably a mistake. In the formula, unfortunately, I'm not looking at the projected numbers anymore, really, I'm looking, I'm looking at the final number at this point. Because I want to see where we are in relation to where we budgeted last year. And I wanted to see where we are as you know, year to date, so you're you're probably right, you you caught a mistake in in a in one of those Excel formulas. So we'll take a look at that.
Well, materials and supplies is the same, it's going to double, and utilities double. And then goes down for projected, so it's just you have three months left.
We're we're, I'm I'm aware of what you're seeing, and so uh we will make sure that we clean that up, and the projected is just a a. It 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 really has no bearing on the final number, it's just showing.
Um.
Uh. A potential, and and if we have an incorrect number in there, then we will make sure that we have that fixed for the next budget workshop.
What are daily supplies, you just remove that column altogether?
But for wall router, that would be anything, it could be like um plumbing supply, say if they had fix a service, if they needed to get like a pitchfork or shovel. Um anything like that, you know, this kind of. All all encompassing.
Um okay, just just an observation that I made in uh just kind of looking at numbers quickly. Is that when we were discussing how many months of the operating budget we need to keep in reserve. Which was a whole different situation. Uh the numbers that were given were four hundred, about about four hundred thirty two thousand a month was what we needed. To cover the operating ba- budget. Now, if you take that times twelve months, that comes out to five million one hundred eighty four thousand. I mean, if my numbers are correct for this budget, we're two million dollars more than that.
Not. I don't think that that's correct, we can look at the, there's a, I roll all this together at the end. There's a, there's a roll up at the end, if we can go over at that at the end, the the overall budget.
Well, that's, yeah, well. I didn't see, I did. You have it all, I didn't see one that just had a, a uh a sheet that said. Here's whatever they equals for expenses, here's whatever they equals for for revenue.
Can I show, oh yeah, can I show you when we get there, it's 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 further down the line?
Okay, all right, yeah, that'd be great.
So moving to fifty three hundred, this is water treatment, so this is the operation of the water treatment plants. Um. You'll notice the uh salaries come in slightly higher, this is to be expected. Because of increases in salaries and increases in in costs for insurance and whatnot. Um as we move into the materials and supplies, we are. Fairly flat, um as we move forward, I'm going to keep moving forward here. What you'll see is. Our basic biggest expense here is our uh materials and supplies, and namely, it's our chemicals. That we have to purchase to ensure that we have the treated water. Um now moving over to this one here, you'll also notice that um our utilities are incredibly high, unfortunately. Um treating water is a very um energy intensive process, so um that does cost us quite a bit to have P G and E. Now, I know that we've explored solar in the past. Um and actually, we are going to continue to explore solar moving forward. Um meeting with some contractors at the uh Aqua Conference, we are going to try to address some of those concerns. And hopefully come back with the next one or two meetings with some updates on potential use of solar to offset some of those costs. Um moving over here, uh. One of the capital expenses, I'll just point this out to you, Director Thornbro, we do have a need for uh to repair the V F D. At Walton, as it has, um it's it's starting to fail, so we wanted to make sure that we included that in there. And then the only improvement that we're doing is to put in automatic gates. So that we have the ability to close the gates automatically and open the gates automatically. Um I'd be happy to at this point, take any questions from this uh detailed budget from both the board and the public.
Director Saunders.
Just the same thing again with Bennett, so I know we have Bennett in each section, and then we also have it in the admin services as well, so. Just that, does it add up to what's in the contract for Bennett?
I'm sorry, I missed the end of your question there.
So we we have a contract with Bennett where the board has a up to number. So we have twenty five thousand for candidate administrative services. Fifteen thousand, so those the total add up to what they're contracted for.
Um I I believe it, it's correct, but we can definitely verify that and bring that to the next workshop meeting.
And that should be with E Corp also.
We would be happy to do that as well.
Reed.
Same question on materials and supplies and these. Are projected as.
Yeah, please, I I understand what you're saying with projected, the projected is is not something.
And then I have another comment on the detail page, is there any way you can put like materials other and then say the last five digits? Of the account? And then also put them in order? Because your chart starts material and supplies and it's number three. And total that, well, I guess you can't total it. Because it won't go over to the other bit. It would make it easier if it was in order.
We can explore doing that, yes. Um additionally. We are, you'll notice that team viewer is on here, we are um looking into cancelling our team viewer membership. Because we have the ability to utilize the V P N here locally. So that is going to be something that we are um trying to reduce some costs. I know it's not a lot of costs, but it's some costs. We are trying to utilize the system that we already have to access our sys- our our systems remotely as needed. Okay, moving forward to treated water. Um this is a section with um. You know, ad- additional, we're pretty flat on salaries, we slight increase of about eleven thousand dollars. Um over where we were uh last year. Uh materials and supplies, this is one where we do anticipate quite an increase in. Um materials, and we'll go into that in the detail section, so here we have. Uh distribution main lateral meter supplies, this has been budgeted for um. Differently in the past, so we are in, you know, when we do make repairs. We're starting to see the costs of those repairs and how much each one of those costs are are costing the district. Based on the reports that are being generated by Cartograph that Adam is presenting to us. So we're able to make a much better educated guess as to how much it's costing to maintain our system here. Now, when we do a meter replacement, excuse me, a water line replacement, that is still going to be considered a capital improvement. These other supplies are, if we have uh one-off meters that we need to have installed. Or we have um additional services that we have installed, this is where um the those costs come from. Uh moving forward, you'll see that there are a few additional um. Capital expenses here for different uh pieces of equipment that we don't have in need. Um and then we have. Um again, you'll notice that the professional services is here as well with E Cor and Bennett. And I will make sure that we check, but those is again, to make sure that those numbers are all correct. If it would be easier, we could all include. The Bennett and the E Cor under admin, and that would match up with whatever their their contract is. And we could just have it in one department, or we could break it out based on where we use it throughout the district, however you'd like to have that be shown.
Breaking it out. Just that the number we had one that they had up.
Yes, I understand.
Uh Director Stoll.
Would you uh? Uh again, uh identify what the S W R C B fees are for?
Yeah, that would be state water resource control board, and these are the fees that we have to submit for. Um to ensure that our uh.
A permit basically for the.
So it's 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 to be able to operate the facility, they they are kind of the overseers of everything water.
Thank you.
Acronym.
Yeah, unfortunately, that doesn't, that word, those words don't fit in that box, so that's why we.
And that's when you always have to remember.
Yeah, you'll see that one a lot, state water resource control board is, they do all water rights, they do permitting. Anything that has to do with um you know, water getting to the public, they they pretty much have a hand in.
Question from the public, Reed.
Why are we paying USA Service Alert for treated water?
Just part of our um. We, as a member, we actually have to pay them to do service alerts, like we have to actually pay them.
Well, wouldn't that, shouldn't that be more in another department, because what would they be doing?
Uh well, treated water is, they're going to mark all the the lines that. Their system, so if someone's going to dig a hole, our treated water guys have to go out and mark where our lines are to ensure that they don't hit them.
Yeah, so we pay them.
Yep.
And it costs us.
It costs us, yeah.
To send somebody out to do it. Oh, yeah, makes sense.
Is that, is that a standby?
No.
Yeah, it's like a state of the state, state law, state manner, like if we're, if you're a utility, someone calls any underground dig alert, we have to respond within forty eight hours, but we also have to. Pay to be part of that program, but it's it's a state law, we can't do it.
One thief that's solid.
It's kind of a safety thing.
Yeah, you don't enter, you want, we want to market.
We use. Big stuff, something somebody tore up.
Well, just, it's like, it's almost like you gotta look at them like they're almost a service, they're taking all these calls and notifying everybody, so we're paying now for them to.
So did this, does this number change much? The service alert one. Does it, is it based on, is it a flat rate or is it based on goals?
It's fly rate.
The call, the the difference would be when we go out based on manpower and in labor.
So, next. Go ahead, Nicholas.
Okay, so we don't have fifty five hundred anymore, we we incorporated that all into administration. So just really quickly, you'll notice that this is one where uh the numbers do go considerably higher. Um than they were last year, one of the things to note was our unfunded liability went up quite a bit in this area, almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um so that's definitely something that we took into account, and then again, salaries um was another big one for this. That got, that went up approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries in- increased in this section, so. That would account for most of the overages that you're seeing here. Again, there are um things that we don't have control over, so you'll you'll. You can kind of take a look at this, and most of what we have in this section is um. Unfortunately. There are small adjustments that can be made, but not much. As we move into. Materials and supplies and the rest of the non-labor expenses. Um. Anything that is highlighted in yellow here, as you'll notice, this was um changed. From the the actual um documentation that went out with the board packet. Um myself and Jessica worked on some of this on Friday and yesterday. And we adjusted some of the numbers based on on thought. And we wanted to make sure we made note of any of the changes. So some of the changes were, we reduced the board training and travel budget. We um increased the bank charges. And we included an additional uh cost for payroll processing fees because we came in with a a better number. So I'd just like to go into the uh detail section of this. And discuss some of the things that we have here. This is um a much more in involved um. Budget category because there's kind of a lot of things that are going on. As we looked at some of the the things here, we looked at a few of the uh. Availabilities to reduce costs based on certain um expenditures we have, so we. Uh looked at potentially getting rid of the payment to mom software. Unfortunately, we have to keep it for four more years. Or do the forensic audit. Or do the forensic audit, so at this point, if the forensic audit saves us twenty eight thousand, any money off of twenty eight thousand dollars, it may be worth it. Or we continue to pay this fee for another four years and we then can drop the mom software off of our. Um. Our cost. Something, something else that may not be popular, but something to suggest is. The potential cancelling of Socrata and it's not anything to do with being not transparent. However, it doesn't seem to be the service that we were hoping it would be. And it seems as though the service that we're paying for, for this six thousand dollars still requires. An incredible amount of employee input for uploading many of the reports. That need to be on there that what, that should be accessed, so this is something that we can, we can continue on. Or we can increase to have, um, more, more accessibility. Or we can include additional reports during board meetings. Um, I'm not sure what the right answer is there, that's why I, I have this highlighted and I'm leaving it to the board to decide. Something that we're adding that was not available before is board member training. This has to do with, instead of having to submit for reimbursement, we would like to streamline the process. Cause if we, uh, book multiple, um. Trainings and multiple events at one time, often we can receive discounts. And so if the board, or excuse me, if the district is able to help the board members to, um, facilitate some of this, we can see. A little bit of, uh, reduction in cost as over them being reimbursed, uh. The anticipated travel, this training budget is twenty five hundred dollars and that is for each one of the board members. And then a travel and mileage allowance for a thousand dollars per, and you can see the cost there at seventeen five. Um, you'll also notice, under utilities, we have reduced the cost. For some of the phone services. We have reduced some of the cost for, um, you know, no more long distance charges. We are including the new internet payment that will be installed in July, that would be the fiber. So that's, um, included here as well. And if we move over to professional services, you can see that this is where a majority of our expenses come out. Um, and so, yes, I'm going to make sure again that we look at the engineering consultant. We look at all of the different, um, uh, E Core. Sequo compliance consultants to make sure that all those numbers are correct and I will verify that with. Um, the board and with the finance committee when I have those numbers at the board work, board workshop. So at this time, I'd just like to open up for any questions from the board of the public.
Uh, Director Seem.
Um, under the secret compliance, you have a, a, a number there, um. Is there a reason for that?
It has to do with their contracts. It has to do, I believe this is the, the, the way the contract is broken down, we just keep some there, it's not that we're doing secret compliance for. The administration, it's just part of the, uh, contract that we hold with E Core.
Uh, okay. Uh, and then you have an ADP security, is that, um. Something that's just building here? And have we looked into something a little? Cause. If my understanding is that you don't have, um. A phone line or you don't have an internet connection or something? All they do is ping you. To find out if it's working or not, so if power's down or something down, the security system doesn't work.
But our power, when our power goes down, the generator kicks in the security.
It still works, yeah, so if power goes out or somebody gets noticed, right?
They get notified that, that ADP is still monitoring you?
It works when we're on generator power.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we don't have the alarm set during the day, so there's no alerts to them. Other than we have video and recording.
Okay.
Director Stone.
I look forward to having the staff discuss the Socrata cancelling, I know that personally, I'm real frustrated with it. And I know that you're real frustrated with the amount of overtime. You have in working with this tool, I, I look at it as a second cost that we paid for a service. And it's, we're not getting a return on it. And I look forward to seeing what else is out there. Is being utilized and this is issued.
Well, and like I said.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't say, I said, but, um, so products, it seems like the version that was. Agreed upon to purchase, cause I wasn't here during that time. Pretty much what it's doing is what it does for me already in Tyler where. I have a report set to run on a certain day of the week. And it pops up in my email, so what Socrata is doing is we've asked it to run these certain reports and then it just populates them. And there's nothing, my understanding is that the board's understanding. Was that they were going to be able to pull information as needed or what they wanted to look at or. Date ranges and that's not what it's made to do, so it doesn't sound like it's what you were requesting. So I don't see the benefit of having it.
Thank you. Um, regarding, um, board training. Miscellaneous training, travel and mileage, just, just a quick, um. Thought is that the training might be fifty percent. Less than it possibly could be and the mileage is about. Ex- expense allocation is about double. Um, I know the three board members here, uh, haven't gone to the CSDA training, which they may choose to. And, um, and no, and there's three of them, they haven't gone to any of the conferences that I'm aware of. And so we might be a little light on the amount of, uh, allocated towards training, I know. One of the directors is. Paying a several hundred dollars out of his pocket to come in line. Uh, with his thought of what was reasonable based on. Yeah, so I, I'm just thinking that might need to be looked at as far as perhaps who intends on maybe going to training by each board member of this coming year. And or a conference versus how much we're actually spending on mileage and just have another look at it.
Yeah, just remember if you want. The FDA, um, special district, uh, good governance, you will have to go to the CSDA meeting and probably an Aqua conference, and that's at least. Two premier. For the.
Yeah, so. What, what I did was look at, CSDA is about six to seven hundred dollars to go to the train, the conference. Um. Aqua is about seven hundred, I think, seven fifty maybe. Um, and then the travel was, if you have to fly or if you had to do mileage, so that's. I, I was, I can, are you saying to increase that budget or to decrease, cause we just decreased the budget, I, I thought we were a little too, too.
Just understand the, um, the, the needs of the individual board members and their. Expectation of maybe able to want to attend or need to attend or like Director Saunders mentioned about for the certification. We might have to go send two people instead of one like last year, the mileage. And, and so you mentioned that the, the Aqua conference was eight hundred and fifteen dollars, um. But the total was between two of us that I know of, was a total of five thousand. For everything, including mileage, so that's a little, if only two people attend these things somewhat. As required either by, you know, the JPI requirements to vote and it, it seems that the, the miscellaneous training. Uh, I see twelve thousand.
Well, the question is, is this just to cover what the district spends and will we still be able to do reimbursement, cause I know, uh.
So, so this is just for, this is just for the conference and to get there. If you have meals and other expenses while you're there, those are, those are gonna be reimbursable expenses. This is so that we can register you for Aqua and so that we can book your travel.
Um, okay, yeah, yeah, that helps, cause on the, on the front end, cause like Mitch couldn't get into the. Aqua thing and I had to pay for his registration, so that was fifteen hundred upfront. Plus my hotel, plus flying, so that's like, ounce of dollars.
And what, and what my, my thought was here is everybody gets. An equal amount, so thirty five hundred dollars per. To do whatever training that they want to do, you know, so it, it keeps, you know, you can't go to everything. Unless you, you know. Get permission from the rest of the board, but you can go to something, you at least anticipate something that you would like to go do to get more training.
I, I think that's a pretty good estimate based on just the cost of the registration and past. Uh, utilization of the funds, just that no one, that I'm aware of kind of talked to.
And anyone that I go above and over, let me just pay myself, so that's why.
Yeah. Okay, that's, so thanks for clarifying that. And, uh, you have an administration fifty six, it's twelve thousand five hundred or ten, did I miss something? Twelve five, I have ten on mine, did I look at something?
That's another one, that's twenty five.
Was that?
Yeah, so we, we reduced it from twenty five to seventeen five.
Oh, seventeen five, oh, I see. But the, uh, it's seventeen five, but it didn't change on the, uh, adminis- the detail that I didn't have and you got. Twelve five, okay, that's more, yeah, it's, I'm, I feel the warm and fuzzies with what you said. But just, I, I think a little few more questions could have been asked of the board and, and to narrow that down, maybe even lower it, but.
Yeah, this wasn't something that's ever been included before and so, um. I, 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 that's why this is open for debate and if you, if. Say if, if you have a board member who doesn't want to travel, that's totally fine, or doesn't want to go to train, that's, that's totally fine. We can reduce the number a- as, as needed.
One way or the other, just so it's honest and it's, and we're using real data. Okay. But, Ree.
Um, there are double lines on. Page ten, materials and supplies. About fifty four hundred, um, finding incorporated.
Every line is doubled because it's fifty five and fifty six put together.
Okay, it doesn't show that. Um, I had to guess.
I think it's just too small.
It does, it shows it in the.
Has all the account numbers.
Right, but can you make the orders smaller and then this, cause I mean literally, you can't read it. And the numbers are so small to be able to maybe make the borders smaller. So we can get more room. Yeah, and then, you know, the dollar signs are all over the place on it, so.
Okay. I think we're ready.
This isn't the way the final budget's going to be presented, the final budget will be presented the way it always has been presented.
Since last, I've also started that too, so we'll discuss.
Yeah, that's fine.
Zone sixty one hundred now?
Yes, so now we have the zone fund, um. Salaries, last year, um, we had only budgeted for eighty thousand dollars in salaries. We anticipated that there is a, some anomaly in our budgeting, that was a fifty six oh one. We came to agree that this is probably where that was supposed to be budgeted for. Um, so basically that's where a lot of the increase in the budget is coming from for the salaries, the top portion. Moving into materials and supplies, um, as I go into the detail, here are some of the. The various projects and things that we're going to do now, I will, I will update and say. Anything under professional services that is here is not included in the. You know, the Bennett or the, or the Sequa. This is all, all underneath here, and so the WDR, all that environmental work, that's all gonna be based upon. Um, a, an additional contract that we have to have for the zone. Um, and then another big thing that we have to include is a rate study and we're gonna have to. We're probably gonna be doing a rate study in both the zone and in both. A fund one hundred and fund two hundred, so that is not included in the budget. Um, for the one hundred, so I have to decide, we're trying to figure out about how much that's going to be so we can include the right budget number. Um, I would like to just let anybody make any comments or questions here as well.
Mr. Stone. AQMD. Air Quality Management District.
There you go. Jessica.
I just wanted to mention that I'm fully aware that capital expenses have the wrong account number, should be two hundred dash sixty one hundred. That's being updated.
Which one?
Wow, page twelve, at the bottom, capital expense for zone. Two hundred dash, the same as everybody else, two hundred dash one hundred.
Good eye.
I just copied and pasted and didn't update it.
Hey, I don't see any questions yet.
In regard to the rate study. Can you give the board an estimate when that rate could be adjusted and be ready for Prop two eighteen?
No, I don't, I don't anticipate, it, it'll be closer to the end of the fiscal year, so sometime in twenty twenty four. The, the rate study won't be done until the WDR is complete.
That's moving up, adding the aging rules and.
And moving on to salaries fiscal year, twenty three, twenty four.
So here's a, uh, an estimation for salaries moving forward for the next year. Um, you'll notice we have one vacant position, um. We don't know when or if we'll fill that. Um, moving forward, we are looking at maybe changing that position title to. Be a crossover for a few different departments. One of the things that we, we see is having only two water treatment operators. If we ever have somebody on vacation. And the other one gets sick, then we do not have a water treatment operator that is available. So we're looking at having a bit of redundancy for there and then. Um, for our wastewater technician, we actually had an issue last week. With, excuse, excuse me, two weeks ago with our wastewater technician being the only person who can do the septic inspections, being on vacation. And, um. That he was on vacation for, uh, approximately two weeks and we had some escrows, escrow issues with a property. So this, we, we're trying to find some redundancy in the system so that our employees can still take their a lot of time. And don't have to be stressed with, um, having to come back to. Work that could have been done by somebody else. Uh. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Director Saunders.
Yeah, I know we have engineering manager, you know, and we want him to consult.
I'm so sorry, it was really, I, I heard something about the engineering manager.
Consultant for it, so.
Yeah, we're, we won't be hiring for that position, I think this is just part of the, uh, the report that we have, that's like a salary scale. I can remove it if you like.
This is, uh, still pre the salary study, so.
Yes, this is all pre the salary study.
Public, Ree.
Um, we not have a retired and new agent anymore?
Um, we are.
That one be on here.
Why wouldn't it, she's an employee.
It comes under a different heading.
Well, it's under a different fiscal year.
So currently her contract is, is. Working through June thirtieth. We haven't anticipated if we're going to use, utilize that position anymore. If the need arises, then we will continue to have that position available.
And then also the operations manager, I thought was required to have, um, water treatment plant licenses. So wouldn't that be your backup?
Yeah, I do, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, I think there's more to it than that, but yeah.
Well, yeah, that, that was part of the contract, maybe we're hired.
And then have the licenses.
And then, but I think these, uh, management salaries are way too high compared to, just for example, um. Daryl Creek's left making about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. After eleven years of being operations manager. And that was like a year and a half ago. So. I just think they're too. And also, why are we not receiving the other end of the salaries and where's the? Salaries and where's the benefit part of the chart that we received the last two years, and that's almost two million dollars more. That's not even on here.
So we will include the rest of the of the.
It means all in the department slides.
Right, but it's not per total, yeah. Well, you remember the one that was submitted during the budget last year.
Yeah, we we we're I, we will include that.
Okay, that's what I asked the last one, okay.
Okay, so here's the calculation for the overtime and the standby pay for the different departments and how we determine what number we are going to be utilizing in those. Areas again, I'll just caveat and note that overtime pay is not guaranteed for our employees. It is only as needed and as required, um, when someone goes out and then on call in the middle of the night, they do get overtime pay. Or if we have an emergency, they get overtime pay, so those are the typically the only times that those are utilized. Um, and this was a a workup done by Adam, so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to have him uh, go over this.
I see no questions.
Okay, so the capital improvement plan, uh, quite a bit was changed here, uh, we reduced. Quite a bit of the um, projects that are non-grant funded to ensure that we are able to complete them all. One of the statements and questions that was presented in the finance committee was, do we have enough manpower, enough time to do a lot of these? Um, and and the answer to that is yes and no, so uh, we are definitely going to be. Looking at the amount of projects that we have and how we can um. Accomplish as much as we possibly can without having issues with the actual operation of the facility of the of the district. So if you have any questions about this, you'll notice that. A lot of this has been reduced or moved into other fiscal years, and this is about one point one million dollars. Of the capital improvement plan budget, the grants portion makes it approximately one point five. And then we also broke out the zone because the zone funds comes from a different area within the general fund, the general plan. So there is a different monies that are available to do zone projects, so. Uh, my opinion was it wasn't appropriate to include capital projects that were going to be funded by zone money. Underneath the whole capital improvement plan, so we made a special category for projects that are going to be done. In the zone. As we move into the grant funding area, you can see that this is another five hundred thousand dollars. That will be for the grant funded uh portions. I will also note, since the last time we spoke, this has been added, and this is the dredging of the reservoirs. And the uh, erosion control methods that Adam discussed earlier. Um, tha- that was um, that emergency declaration funding that we are hoping to get. To be able to offset those costs, and then the only other one that I'd like to discuss is. Uh, development of alternative water sources, this down here, and so what that is, is that is the exploration of two. Uh, water right diversions that we have access to, one is Onion Creek and one is Otter Creek. And so we are starting the process of determining how we can access those alternative water sources. Um, we have the ability to create an additional impoundment. Uh, within the district that we could be utilized for future V A uh arrangements. And future water transfers if we develop it at the Onion Creek location, so at that point, I'd just be happy to take any questions.
Questions, Ron, Vice President Seaman?
Um, under the C I P project zone, um, it says waterline, the C D F field. Isn't that a wastewater line?
It is not a wastewater line, what we were hoping to do is to install a treated water line. To where the C D S field is, so we can utilize it for cleaning and other other uh, operations.
Oh, okay.
The the, the ten thousand dollars is because we have to get a right of way to go through a property.
Right, okay.
Nicholas, did you uh, ask for questions on capital improvement projects or is? Uh, I was just, I had a question, um, does it make any sense, for whatever reason you could think of? It's not compensated for or adjusted for that due to the. Cost of goods and services going up year over year, and we're projecting out up to four years here. Um, the cost of commodities are 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 going up more than maybe salaries and other things. Uh, should we consider putting an algorithm associated with each? Year as a, because they're depreciating dollars moving out, so let's say pump station retrofits. Twelve thousand this year, seven percent less than that would be. Closer to a little over eleven thousand in twenty twenty four, twenty five, closer to ten thousand three hundred. And and when you get out to twenty eight, that twelve thousand is closer to nine. So in real dollars, buying power is is going down, so I was wondering if if an algorithm might be applied. Uh, to each year to offset the depreciating value of the dollar.
So this is.
We're forecasting maybe.
I think what we're doing is trying to anticipate things that we need to do moving forward, a- again, this is. Probably not going to be, it's it's probably going to be adjusted next year, this is just trying to anticipate what is going to be needed. Moving forward, and so for example, with the pump station retrofits, we would do up to twelve thousand dollars worth of retrofits as needed. So we may or may not need them, but as needed, those that will, that's what we are hoping to do.
Uh, Director Stone.
Um, in your vehicle replacement uh, category, uh, I know that we need to. Replace some existing vehicles because a lack of towing capacity.
That is correct.
What's the cost benefit of replacing other vehicles before we get into this uh, zero emissions uh, vehicle? Mandate, is is it cost beneficial to purchase some vehicles prior to that coming onboard?
It's definitely something to be considered, i- if it were to be up to me, I would say yes, I would like to convert. As much as the fleet to newer vehicles today, unfortunately, I don't think that our budget will allow. And so I was trying to find a happy, comfortable place to. To come up with a number, so that we could always in- increase that, I think that that that's a great way to look at it. Um, but we also have to be very careful that we stay within the allotted budget that we have for something like this.
Yeah, my concern is that the cost of. Future vehicles. Will be just as cost prohibitive. Oh, thank you.
Public Sheree. Algorithm that ultimately never go down, it just goes up, so remember, every time we're out a year, the next time we do a bit, it's. Not put the cost now, because. And this is in today's dollars, I think we, as board members, we need to look at that, that's not a future process at today's dollar. But it's a good point.
That tunnel inspection, did we ever get anyone to to bite on that?
Because I know Adam's been working with somebody.
Um, I haven't got anyone like lined up to do it, we did have someone lined up last, uh, the previous tournament manager did, um, but not. Not right now, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fi- figure that out.
That's still the sixty five thousand?
That was the number we were quoted in, was it two thousand twenty two?
Yeah.
So it could, it could change.
Hey, okay.
That until at least November because of the, we have to do it after uh, irrigation season.
One more comment, I've said this before, but with the annual canal lining and canal improvement, the cost. Can definitely be returned and what water saved can be full.
I'm sorry, I I was, I missed the end of your sentence.
You missed the end of your sentence, it was during. Pardon, I didn't hear you.
Uh, again, my comment about uh, annual canal lining and canal improvements. We're gonna return on that investment because that'll free up more water for transfers in the future.
That is very correct, yes, as as well as the uh, the pipeline, the canal pipeline improvements.
Exactly.
Now the public Sheree.
How much money do we have in capital reserves to pay for these projects that looks like a million? Um, and are you going to be transferring the excess funds like that happened last year? One point four, almost five million dollars was put in capital reserves for fifth years. Um, capital improvement project.
So I'm gonna have to get back to you on that question, um. The the what, the budget here is one point six, there's approximately ten million dollars in total reserves for the district. Um, and I would have to get you a an exact number for the capital reserves.
Okay, but are you also going to be transferring funds from the water fund like was done last year, the annual transfer?
We are hoping to, yes.
But you don't know the dollar amount yet.
Um, Nicholas, what else do you have, George?
So, um, just a few other projects that we're thinking about doing five years and and out, um. In regard to the north, the Fazio water, that's North Fork American River Pumping Plant. Uh, Canyon Creek Reservoir, potentially putting in hydro at Stumpy, uh, getting back our Loon Lake um. Connection, and then potentially expanding the districts with line extensions, so that is what I have here. Um, here is the questions that you may have had, uh, Director Thorne, bro, with revenues. I'm sorry, it was.
Director Saunders has a question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do get hydro electric contracts at, and that's not a, I mean, the C I P does it.
I'm so sorry.
We do have the two hydroelectric plants that are coming back to us, contract wise.
Yeah, I do not have that in our budget because I need to do some research as to how much money that's actually generating and how much we will capture.
Here is him.
Twenty six, twenty seven.
Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, twenty six, I think is when we get the, one one is twenty six and one is twenty seven, there's there's two different contracts. So, here is our revenue budget, and I will um. Note that we finally got ahold of somebody at the county, or at least Jessica finally knocked on, knocked down enough doors at the county. To get our property tax revenue, so I think uh, a big applause for Jessica on that. Uh, and that did come in about a hundred thousand dollars higher than we anticipated.
It was one point nine nine eight.
Yeah, so we're gonna actually increase our proposed budget um, for that to, like. Probably the two million dollars, because we anticipate that going up a little bit more because of of housing costs. But here's all the different uh, revenues that we anticipate throughout the year. So I'd just be happy to um, take any questions.
Director Saunders.
Yeah, I know it's all chipping it out with smudg money, and you know.
I said apparently everyone retired last year and nobody took over their positions.
Yeah, so we're working on that one, I actually had a meeting with the county, um, and so we're we're getting ahold of that as well. Say it one more time.
The proposed interest income is sixty thousand, so that's a little.
I think that's actually gonna be low. I think what the anticipation from the investment accountants were, was about ten thousand a month, so that's, I I went half of that.
Seeing what happened with uh, their G I A, they weren't, they didn't get back as much as they.
Yeah, that's why I didn't include the full budget number.
Go ahead, Director Stone.
Um, you mentioned in the capital improvement projects, the very last line identifies a grant pool for what's.
Yes.
Potentially available of one point nine two five million. However, in the last line of the G D P U D revenue budget, it identifies uh. Three point two million, uh, where's the one point two seven five million.
Sorry, it 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 has to do with the way some of the grants crossover in the fiscal year. So, the three point two is probably high, I can, I would, you're probably right, we should reduce it to the one point nine. Um, originally, we were anticipating more grants coming in in this year, but they're gonna be spread more throughout other years, so we'll adjust that number.
Go ahead, Nicholas.
Oh, that's it, is there, is there any other questions?
Um, public, Sheree.
I got a question. Proposition two eighteen that we've been paying on for the last five years, we only had number eight increase and that was first year, right? Second year, the second year, and then after that was COVID and all kinds of stuff, so it's been no zero increases. How are we doing after just having just one increase, I mean, we're doing pretty good, right?
It's one and a half.
We're going to look at a rate study again this year, uh, we're gonna do a a much more thorough rate uh, rate study to ensure that we are looking good moving forward. Um, nobody wants to hear the words rate increase, um, but it is a potential that we we may have to raise rates. To cover the increasing costs from inflation, from salaries, there's a, there's a lot of things that are gonna be factored in. Right now, we are doing okay, but we definitely um, have to look at the numbers again.
Based on the uh, projection from the two eighteen, we um, exceeded where we were supposed to be at a great rate.
Because what?
Other income. Then we got the tax, taxes back.
Well, they they're cutting, it's being mailed today or tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll go pick it up. It's on my way to Mexico.
I have a question on the twenty three, twenty three approved budgets, um, net. Total water revenue is six point nine nine three, and then your projected is six. One five eight, that's like eight hundred and thirty five thousand dollars difference in income. Not quite sure why.
Say say your question one more time.
Okay, the twenty twenty three approved, six million nine nine three, and your projected revenue is six one five eight.
Yes, if you look at residential water sales from twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, the anticipated water sales were. Four hundred thousand dollars higher than they are, and irrigation sales came in almost uh, almost two hundred thousand higher. So, the the approved budget was not anticipated correctly last year. So that's where you see a great deal of of money that is not going to be seen in the district. You'll notice that the actual money coming in is not even close, we looked back. Because there hasn't been a rate increase since this was uh, done, we went back to the original. Uh, amount, which is the two point eight million dollars for anticipated residential sales, and so that's where you see a great deal of difference in there.
Okay, and I also see a difference in the review summary from last year and this one on actual, actuals. Okay, and I also see a difference in the review summary from last year and this one on actual, actuals. Like, this one has twenty-one, twenty-two, you got two point or two million eight seventy-three. Last year it was two million nine eighty-one. There's a difference there. So how do you change something that's already an actual?
Uh, I'm, I would have to back and look at the numbers.
Okay, but it's still, even if you take off the four hundred and the other, there's still, it's down, something's going.
Yes, if you look at several of the other, you have a category that is other, that is a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. We don't know.
That, oh, it went from fifty thousand dollars in penalties to nothing for three years.
Yeah, but it was, I think that was um, um, grants. Also.
That is not grants.
It was because of COVID.
Grants is all the way at the bottom.
Yeah. We did share that with a hundred and eighty-five thou.
And also take into account, we had the mandates and we had reduced order as well, so.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about waters, this is other. All right, it just doesn't matter.
So what were the penalties? Did we go over that again?
Penalties are.
Or what, late fees? We're already up to fifty thousand so far this year and we only started in December.
Non-payment, got it.
And then violations for water theft, that all that stuff.
Okay.
And then it also has, I think some of that is lean, when we lean a property and it comes back later, we get it there as well. Okay, so here's our operating expenses. You can see each department and then the highlighted area. Is right here. The. Five point nine is anticipated. Last year was approved at five point two. So the additional. Costs are approximately seven hundred thousand dollars more than last year. And much of that can be seen in. The admin budget. And we went over all those different categories, so. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh. I'd be happy to uh take any questions. I still think that we can uh reduce the budget, I, I don't think that. We are at a final number yet, so I think the budget workshop will be helpful to reduce some of that. As well as um, we have one more. Board meeting to finalize this, so. It doesn't sit happy with where I would like it to be, I like it to be a little bit less. Unfortunately, I'm trying to be realistic in the costs that we may or may not incur moving forward, so. We did throw about everything at the wall that we could and we're going to try to see what we can remove.
We move on to.
One comment back on revenue, if we look at last year's budget, there's a footnote. Free, which is referring to the hundred and ninety-six thousand re- grant revenue and other revenues restricted to capital projects. Are shown in the restricted funds. That's where, where that came from.
Okay.
Last year's budget.
All right.
Um, that's the entirety of my presentation unless there's any other questions.
Doesn't look like it, so we're.
Well, I have final comments if I can.
Um.
Are we off the budget?
We need going off the budget, yes.
Okay. One million dollar increase, when I've seen this budget, um, I think is outrageous. First in February, it was uh seven hundred thousand over, April it was one point one million and now it's about a million. Over last year's budget. This feels like a bait and switch technique used by a typical used car salesman. This board's main duty to the rate payers is the financial health of the district. Since February fourteenth, DM Snyder has presented three different proposed budgets to this board. And once to the finance committee, which included large increases each time. And not one board member or committee member questioned. Any of the details of this budget. This budget doesn't have a consolidated expense section. Like, laughter budget, so it's a grand total of all the different departments and all the different accounts. So you can't see what you need to see. Last year, the budget included this section, the layout of this budget is very difficult to read. Compared to the past budgets, especially with Department fifty-six hundred, it's so small. And I, this budget shows eight hundred and thirty-five less in revenue, why is that? So this part, partially got explained. Um, the salary chart shows proposed salaries of over two million dollars, which is fourteen percent higher than the current approved budget. Social Security rece- rents received eight point seven percent. The salary chart neglects to show us the additional employee taxes and benefits for, which are probably an additional two million. And why was the unfunded Calcur's liability for fifty-six hundred gone from one hundred ninety, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand? The other departments didn't go up. Uh, the projected column on the revenue page appears being completed, which we discussed. And the PowerPoint was added yesterday to the district website. Meeting page and the public was not notified of this. The public should get an email when anything is added or revised concerning the meeting document. Colorado County follows this procedure very exactly. And there's a public comment, it was emailed out. And just for a note, the two thousand eighteen rate increase brought in about one point five million dollars in additional funds. Which was spent. And, 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 and increased the rates dramatically. What will a million dollar increase in expenses do to the rates when the new rate study is completed? That's like two thirds of that. So, Confucius says, and he probably didn't, those who are too trusting are the ones most likely to be bitten. If they have not done their responsibility and exercised due diligence.
I, I will address those comments with this, the budget is not a million more, it is approximately seven hundred thousand dollars more than last year's budget. And yes, we have worked the numbers, we have changed the way things are going to be done. We've tried to tighten up in certain areas, we've tried to to come up with better numbers. And I think that that is being reflected in how these numbers are changing and coming down from the original budget. Yes, we were very, very high, we were up to one point two million over. And now we were, we've reduced the budget by almost five hundred thousand dollars from that number.
Okay, now on, moving along to action item number eight. C, summary of surplus sales and request to use these funds to buy equipment purchases.
Yes, thank you, um, so this next item is um, I'm gonna turn it over to Adam in just a minute, but. We have surplused out several pieces of equipment that are all listed in the uh, the staff report. We have accumulated approximately eighty-six thousand dollars in that account. We've purchased some hand tools and some toolboxes for the uh, the work, the ware- warehouse. And we are looking to utilize some of that to purchase some additional equipment. Um, I'd just like to caveat that once we do purchase the new equipment, we will then surplus that equipment out, so. We would be left with approximately nine thousand dollars after this surplusing. And then what, we would surplus those equipments back out for the amount of between thirty and fifty thousand dollars anticipated. So the pieces of equipment we are looking to purchase are a uh mini excavator. We are looking to upgrade the razor to a four-door razor because of the need to bring more people. To the work sites in the wintertime. And a hot water pressure washer. So I'd just like to um have Adam, he's included some uh preliminary documentation. We are anticipating you, buying a used excavator. And a new uh razor, so Adam, if you have anything to add.
I don't have much to add to that, yeah, I think it's just um, there's an opportunity with some of the surplus. Funds we received, some of the equipment, you know, kind of upgrade some of the equipment we have now. Not only to, you know, upgrade their, upgrade the equipment, but to have a. Another piece of equipment that better fits our, our use with the razor.
Good, I just like, what you're approving is an up to amount, so we are going to shop around as best as we can. To ensure that we get the best deal possible with the used equipment and with the razor. So that you're not approving a, a definite number, you're approving it up to number.
Questions from. Director Stone.
Uh, am I correct in assuming that we have a vehicle that has the weight capacity to pull this compact extra baby?
Yeah. Sure.
You got an idea with the current value of the box kit?
Try to find some used comparisons, what that has, um, I came up with. Um, between twenty-five and thirty thousand about. It's what, because we sold the, the ninety-nine Takuchi. For seventeen and it had about six thousand hours, this was in two thousand and ten.
Oh, okay, thirty, uh, or thirty-three thousand, so.
They were kind of all over the place, though, on the prices, so. So it's kind of that's the.
Yeah, but John Deere was gonna be pretty expensive.
Yes, I found a couple of used ones, um. Around fifty, make a little bit, a little bit higher, because I'm trying to get under a thousand hours, I want something that's like, you know, twenty-five hundred hours.
Director Saunders.
Pretty much the plan I like doing the surplus equipment is, is, they can reuse that. Running from uh, the circle so we can uh, staying in capital expenses when we do get used. Used equipment to upgrade that way, so.
So, uh, public comment? Um, at this point, the recommendation. Is to uh. Approve the transactions as proposed. Do I get a motion from the director?
So move.
All in favor? Motion passed unanimously, five to zero. Okay.
I'm holding back saying something else.
Oh.
Action item eight. E, policy four, two, one, zero, board meeting standards of conduct.
So.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this, this next uh item has been discussed at the policy committee. And what we're looking at doing is changing some of the uh board. Hall, board meeting policy um, standards of conduct. Uh, included in the packet is the proposed changes that are um redlined and included in there. Um, of note, one of the changes reduces the public comment period from five minutes and twenty-five minutes individual. And twenty minutes in total to three minutes individual and fifteen minutes in total. And um, if there are more than five members of the public that wishes, wish to speak on one item. Then we reserve the right to reduce that three minutes accordingly. Um, and this is just to streamline the, the board meeting process, it's not to limit public comment, we still. Will listen to all those who have comments and we will still receive all written comments as given. Uh, this is to uh, uh, allow a better uh, use of the time during the board meeting. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Also, uh, Director Saunders and Director Seaman sit on that policy committee, so they may have some insight into this matter as well.
Director Stone. I wonder it may be appropriate to uh have a show of hands prior to the public comment to get a judgment of how many comments are gonna be.
Yes, typically, that's what we will ask for.
Director Thumber.
Yeah, I think the uh, the new policy is missing a section that it needs to have in there. Where it was this section five oh three oh four point two. Where I said the board president may allow additional per speaker and per subject comment time when necessary. For a full and fair proceeding, that was in the old policy, it's not, I didn't see it in the new policy. I think that needs to be in there.
It says right under the very top line. Uh, the page three.
Page three?
Yeah. Page, I'm sorry, page two, I, I apologize. It's five oh three oh four point two. Board president may allow additional per speaker, per subject comment time when necessary for a full and fair proceeding.
Right, that's, that's in the old one, it's not in the new one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying.
That was kind of my point.
I apologize for that, I was looking at the wrong document, um, so we can add that in there and uh, we would. If, if the, if the board would like to make that uh adjustment, I think that's a good adjustment to make and we can add that in there. Under uh, section forty-two, one oh point oh six, public comments, we can add it to uh, number seven.
Right, that, that, I think that's where it should go. What kind of policy committee we got?
Sometimes heated.
Sometimes heated?
Okay, so. Can I get? A motion to.
And the motion to adopt this would be with the change of adding in the language. From Director Thornbro under section forty-two, one, zero, point, zero, six, adding number seven. Uh, where the board president is allowed to add time.
Uh, I think we can be a little more specific, how about this? I make a motion that we approved this policy. Uh, with adding a number seven to section four-two, one, zero, point, oh, six. Uh, that states the verbiage that is on the old policy. Um, section number five, zero, three, zero, point, four, point, two.
I can amend that because this one's left out, so I would have that, it should go back where it. The law, because it's missing, so it would go between three and four, and I have a lot to. Add in five, zero, three, zero, point, four, point, two. And that would be the, between three and four, and there would not be a change. I would keep it as.
When does it have to be in between three and four?
Because I would keep it as the same policy as we have before, we only changed uh. We only changed the minutes in that section, so that should have been, that was an hour that wasn't in there.
Well, no, you just made complicated motion a whole lot more complicated.
Well, I just have to be at five, zero, three, zero, point, four, point, two, between uh. Three and four, actually, for the public comments. It's missing, so it's just added by.
Uh, do we get a second?
He does that every time.
Go commentary.
Um, I don't see why it's necessary to change the five to three, never had a problem with it, when have we had a problem? We haven't. And limiting that, and then also adding a designate in there? What is that?
That's the law, but the law changed in a, is a new law on this eruption of uh. Meetings and this technical to match the law.
Okay, and is that a law enforcement officer?
There would be law enforcement, there could be bouncer, sheriff, it could be fire, but.
Okay, well, I don't know if you make it through the meeting before they're five years healthy. And okay, if it's a law requirement, but I still don't think you should change the five to the three. And, and limiting the number, because when have you ever had a problem? Maybe at the rate study. So to me, it gets, yeah, I think, yeah.
Well, like this uh addition that we're gonna be adding back in where we left it out. Is it's up to the discretion of us and we're not gonna not allow fair proceeding, he proceeded today a little bit longer than first gentleman. I wasn't aware of the clock being up there, so I felt, so.
No, it finished, it went, it went back, it reset.
I thought it wasn't running.
It, it reset.
So, so we, if had I. So, so we, if, had I caught that, I, I mean, I wasn't. He, he spoke longer than we had intended or. Typically someone might, he's his first time here and.
Well, I think for most of his compliments, we make an exception.
Yeah, yeah, the, the big butt came in and that's when I started.
That's when the clock should have started.
Where's the clock? But, uh. Uh. I think that. Honing it down, keeping the meeting as concise and as short and as brief unless. Uh. Then we have some limits and. At the discretion of the board.
It's consistent with all of, uh, most of the boards in California, so. Very few of over three minutes.
So, thank you.
We have a motion.
Do you have a motion to adopt? Well. Yeah, yeah, the motion, I second with that. Addition.
So I made the initial one, you made an amended one? So I can second your amendment one, or am I out of this?
No, you would.
No, you can second.
You need the motion, yes.
Can I get a?
We'll never screw up again, honest.
I, I'll second. Then, what he said.
Okay, then can I get a, um. Uh, motion to approve this, whether.
That's what we just did.
I mean, I'm not motion, but, um, getting tired here. Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh. Passes unanimously.
Heard me this time, right?
Yeah, I did.
Uh, it, uh, this passes unanimously five to zero. And. Board meeting standards of conduct. Will change as of today. As of today? It takes effect immediately?
It takes effect the next board meeting.
Oh, okay, that's pretty immediate.
Whenever the revenue.
Okay, um, action item eight E. Aqua Board. For Aqua Board Vice President. Nomination of Director Saunders for Vice President.
So I don't have a lot to say here, but I will let, uh, Director Saunders, um, have a few minutes. Um, this is a item where we. Uh, would need a resolution nominating Director Saunders to run for the Vice President position at Aqua. I think, uh, Director Saunders would be a great representative of both Aqua and the district and. He's been quite involved with many of the Aqua committees and much of the Aqua informational, uh, uh. Staff and he's got a great reputation within Aqua. And I think that this would be a great opportunity for him to, uh, serve the district and serve Aqua.
I think this is self-explanatory. We've been on consent.
Uh, the, the reasoning. A little above and beyond this going on consent and I, it's also gonna be on the. RWA meeting, uh, Thursday, because I'm asking for, uh, their support and not counting, so. Basically, it's good to have, uh. Small agency represented, because a lot of the water agencies are huge and urban water suppliers and a lot of them are. South of Sacramento, so not only would we have someone from the northern part of the state, a rural part of the state, that's more urban water supplier. That's also, we've gone through the same, uh, we've gone through, you know, we've gone through wildfires. We have the same. Pressure that we have, we have the same regulatory constraints, you know, the small districts thing that. Aqua can provide to, uh, districts like, uh, in charge of. Having branch writing abilities that can be shared and things like that is something I can bring up to Aqua. And, uh, the big thing is the headwaters, so you know, we have to keep pushing the headwaters, because that's, uh. Pretty sixteen to seventy percent of all the water come anywhere we are.
I get them soon.
Pushing.
For all of California.
Yes.
So in other words, we'll have a hook.
Yeah. Director Seaman?
So the question I have is, uh, what is a, uh, cost that this is going to incur on the district?
So, it's actually less, because I have, I'm on the, I'm on the.
Well, that's, yeah.
So I'm on the reason board now, so I have to go to the two conferences a year and I believe like any. The conference people, the president invited, that totally, that's fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh.
Me that was a good question.
There's probably a benefit to you being here.
Yeah, right. And, uh, and, and, there's double line questions, kind of. Um. Speaking of pushing, uh. No, I, I, I seen, uh, the value of you attending all these, uh, conferences and meetings and representing us and, uh. And. And, uh, and I could see the value. And I saw you. In action at the conference and I think, uh. Uh. You're good at pushing us around here. Uh, no, you could, no, you'll be a, a fine representative for our district and. And I think you'll do well. What I could see, yeah.
I agree.
Here, here. Um, it's kind of like a promotion.
Now, the chances are we're fighting sudden cows, so, I mean, so at the women in water meeting, all of a sudden, slate cards starting coming out, so we're. You're fighting the machines, so, but at least this year, if I don't win, I get my name on it next year.
Name recognition this year, yes, very least. Uh, can I get a?
Public comment?
Uh, oh. Top of. Okay.
But Mike, you're just, you're going up for an election on this, so. You, okay, so when?
We're nominating him.
We're nominating, there'll be an election process and it goes in every watering hole and gets the hold on it.
You, you need to put a sign up in front of my house?
Well, on the interstate.
We gotta be back in the corner.
On, on interstate five, maybe. You know, something like that. Um. So can I get a?
Do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What could possibly go wrong?
Sorry, I was out of, I was right away. Can I get a motion to nominate Director Saunders for the ACAWA Board Vice President?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate and support Director Saunders as a candidate for the position of ACAWA. Vice President.
Oh, so. Well said, seconded. All in favor? All right, any opposed?
Wait a minute.
He saw me.
So. All, uh, yes, all, all in favor? Five, I, my pass is five to zero, like I said. Um. Motion passes. Congratulations, Director Saunders.
But you have a one.
Long way to go. Who gets the homeboy? Every water agent.
And there's a lot, I looked at that list.
Four hundred.
Four hundred sixty six.
Yeah, it's. Big stuff.
Uh, you're a shoe in.
I went into, I went in to monitor the voting and see.
Hey, can we get on with this and go away?
I just saw we have a.
Yeah, so, hey, let's see where we're.
I didn't see that before.
Public hearings, none?
I have a, I have something to discuss. But I'm not sure if I want to put it on a future agenda item, but it, that pressure washer of their location and what they're doing with it. Um.
I knew you were gonna bring it up.
Well, I brought it up with the last GM. Um. Uh, so we don't have a, a discharge into that creek because of pressure washing with that pressure washers. That we have there. Because they usually are doing it at the end of the building and that. Run off, because that's asphalted.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think of that.
Ooh. That's what happens when you deal with an inspector.
You gotta do a lot of cleaning.
Wow. We, we will work on making it environmentally sound.
Okay. Because you've got a lot of oils, greases and sides of mud and debris.
Yep.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, any other board member with? Uh, anybody on the board member had a request for future? Nicholas, any, uh? Any final comments?
No, I do have a good news for Director Thornbroe. We have no closed session tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Tuesday, um. I'm gonna miss Dr. Tuesday if I don't get it going here.
With that said, conclude today's session, board of directors. May sixteenth, twenty twenty three at six twenty one PM.
What about the next meeting day?
Get to have a motion adjourned, please.
Next meeting day will be June thirteenth, what is it?
Adjourned?
June thirteenth, two PM.
That'll be a special, we'll be in the next, so, get a kind of motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
In favor?
Did.
I, meeting, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all, and I apologize for not being there. I will be at the next one.
Thanks, Nick.
Well, do we need?
Have a good evening, all.
I have a question now. Do we need to keep?